Hi, thank you for joining the City of Kingston Common Council at our Community Development Meeting on Public Hearing to proceed that today is Tuesday, January 26. My name is Andrea Schott. Before we begin, we'd like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded, both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. If you have any audio issues, you could chat with me on Zoom or you could text me at the following number, 845-594-6120. As the organizer, I do preserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. As I said, we'll be starting with the public hearing this morning, so I'm going to this evening, so I'm going to turn the floor over to the Chair Alderman, Steve Shabbat.
Thank you, President Schott. Tonight's public hearing concerns the reallocation of community development block grant funds, $500,000 for sewer repair in Midtown, $50,000 for asbestos removal and demolition of Planet Wings, and $4,500 for the Business Alliance of Kingston.
We do have one speaker signed up to talk about this. I'm going to call on Ellen DeFalco now. Ellen, you should be unmute yourself and speak. I assume I've allowed you access to speak, but it still says just to ask to unmute. Ellen, is there a way to unmute yourself? Because I can't do it from my side.
Maybe if she hangs up and calls in again?
We could try that. Thanks for your patience. We're just gonna wait on the public hearing to see if our speaker could come back. In the meantime, again, this public hearing is on the $500,000 for the sewer, is in Midtown, $50,000 for Planet Wings demolition, and $4,500 for Business Alliance of Kingston. If anybody else wants to speak on this specific reallocation, just raise your hand on the Zoom and I'll call on you. But Ellen is back, but it's still asking to unmute.
Looks like she's, her phone is actually muted, so she needs to unmute her phone.
Ellen, if your phone, because you're called in, so your phone might be muted. Does anybody else want to speak on this in the public hearing? Steve, it's up to you if you want to keep it open or you just have to ask three times if anybody wants to speak and then we could close it if you wish.
Yeah, well, we'll see. I mean, if somebody is able to get in, namely Ellen, you know, we'll allow her to speak if she's able to figure out how to get in. I guess we would allow that then. Other than that, you know, I think we should move forward.
Alright, so do you want to just end the public hearing then?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, I don't, if she figures out what the problem is with her phone and calls back, you know, certainly we'll allow her to speak at that time, even though it's during our --
Alrighty, so it is 6:40 and we are closing the public hearing. And I'm gonna turn it right back over to the Chair Alderman, Steve Shabbat, to start up the meeting.
Thank you, President Schott. We'll call the meeting to order. I have 6:40 on my clock, so we will start our business at hand. I think we will change the rotation a little bit. The agenda has the applicants speaking at the end of our meeting. I thought it might be better if they spoke rather than sit through our meeting. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No, but Andrea, I'm getting texts and emails from people and I don't know why it isn't working for them, because I'm forwarding them what I use. And I just got one, I clicked the Zoom link that I gave her and it seems for the audience, YouTube viewer, but not as a --
I can't, I can't hear you. Can you talk into the mic?
Sorry. It's saying that the clip, for some reason, it's the same link that I use. I just forwarded the meeting invitation and it's like the YouTube thing. Can you somehow resend it to me? Julie can't get on, Cassandra can't get on. I don't know why it wouldn't work. I'm sorry. I mean, I went into my calendar, I clicked, "I'm here," and I forwarded my calendar invite and yet they're still having difficulty.
I had to, did everybody have to use two separate passwords to get in? I did.
I just clicked on Zoom and it was there.
I can see Julie as an attendee. I can see there's a whole, like, if you click on participants, attend, and then there's panelists and attendees, and there's a whole list of people.
Oh, alright. Ah, look at that.
To be admitted or something.
Yeah, they're all on there. I don't know if they're in like a waiting room or something, but the only thing I had to do was put in my screen name and I had to put in my email address and I went and it took me right to the meeting.
Yeah, so everybody that you see on the attendees list is in the meeting. They're just kind of in another room until they're gonna speak to us, then I put them in the panelists. So on the attendees list is here.
Okay.
Let me just resend the link. Thanks.
So Julie said she's an attendee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Andrea, if you look at, if you go to your participants button and look at attendees, you'll see all of them on. Cassandra, Julie, they're all in there.
Right, I know.
I don't know, so why are they saying they're having trouble getting on?
Julie is saying that she couldn't be seen.
Right, until they're ready to speak, I then put them as panelists.
Oh, alright. Now I lost everybody.
Alright, so you ready for the first speaker? Alright, so I'm just going with my stack of applications. If anybody has to leave early, just raise your hands and I'll make sure I call on you. So if we could have Bonnie O'Hara from Sunraise, I'm going to get you in here. And all you have to do is unmute yourself.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So I can't, like, I can't see you. I can see all of you guys, but I can't see myself. So that's why I think it feels different than other Zoom meetings that we've been part of. Like, I couldn't see where I had, I could allow myself video or no video or a mic on or off or anything.
Right, we do this for the, for the public speaking portion. I can, if you want to be on video, I could put you on video right now. Would you like --
I'm fine. I mean, if you guys can see, or if you don't need to see, just, I was just trying to address like what, what the other people were saying, because I was worried too, that I wasn't really part of the meeting. But then I realized it's a different format, as you explained.
Yes, it's just a different setup than regular --
Gotcha. Okay.
Bonnie, you could speak about your application now. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Um, yeah, so what I have proposed, and I know that everybody has had a chance to look at a copy of the proposal, is what I'm calling a sanctuary space, a Sunraise Sanctuary Garden. And what I envision that to be is, as described, is on a lot that I have worked with, Mr. Robert Iannucci, who is a developer here in town. He has a couple of lots for sale down on the East Strand. I have spoken to him multiple times, actually, over the last couple of years when I came up with this idea. Actually, I submitted this plan, I mean, this proposal, this plan, back in, I want to say it was May or June, when they asked for ideas to kind of deal with the COVID pandemic. And so I realized that it wasn't entirely appropriate then, just because money needed to go to boots on the ground and feeding folks and housing folks and that sort of thing. But in any case, at that time, I started realizing the importance of healing and the mental health issues that have come up as a result of the COVID pandemic, particularly for children. And so I approached Mr. Iannucci. I asked him if he would be willing to work with me and giving me a piece of space or land that I could use. He said yes, so kind of moved ahead from there. How I would like to use the space is basically to set it up fenced in, a professional-grade tent in there to help us with dealing with elements, depending on the time of year, put some picnic tables in there. I know it's not a large space. I sort of see it as being pretty intimate, but it still would be space enough for two horses or two ponies. And I have it allotted for six kids at a time with three staff. And so within that space, within the time, it would be a three-hour block. And I'm modeling this now, at this point, this is being modeled after the late summer mini camp that I did and hosted last summer, late summer 2020. And that took place at the farm where I rent property. So it was a three-hour block of time. The kids came, there was time to kind of meet and greet, we got right in with the horses, everybody socially distanced, masks, all of that. It was a big open space and being outdoors certainly lends itself to the COVID practices that are required. And essentially, what would happen is the kids would have time to meet the horses, groom and tack the horses, which mean grooming is, I imagine, obvious, and tacking means to put the equipment and the saddles on them. And then from there, they would take turns riding. And each child would get a small, you know, one-on-one lesson with me, just to learn the basics, safety of mounting and dismounting, stopping, starting, how to kind of be with the horse and in the saddle at that point, just so that I didn't have kids sitting around while that was taking place. We also, at Sunraise, feel strongly about combining education and art and music. So depending on the theme of the day, there was always a project going on, so there would be kind of a separate but close area where an art project would be taking place. And so it was almost like stations kind of set up, so that the kids were always engaged doing something, whether it be with the horses, whether it be making an art project related to horses. There was also just space to be around, interacting with each other, that kind of thing. And anyway, three hours seemed like a good block of time. We had time for a little snack, which was provided by People's Place. And at the end, there is the breaking down, the taking off of the equipment from the horse, grooming the horses again, getting them kind of put away, so to speak, whether, you know, they go out to paddock, or in this case, they would just be kind of returned to, you know, the freedom of grazing in the area. So I hope that gives you a little bit of an overview based on what I said and what was written. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you hear me?
Rita might have a question.
Go ahead, Rita. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I'm trying to learn this format, like raising my hand from this thing here. So Bonnie, I had a question. This is Rita Worthington.
Hi there.
So I see that you linked up with Pastor Doris Schuyler to, for the water hookup? And I'm wondering, when you explained the program to her, you know, what her, what her feelings were, what she thought about how African-American children would be involving themselves in your program, since she does pastor in African-American church body? Did she, should she mention anything to you, or did she convey her feelings about that?
Her feelings about how, how she might want to be involved?
Yes, and how her congregation, how her congregation and young people that attend her church might want to be involved.
Sure, yes. And actually, there's some updated material, which I've been sharing with Amy, and so I know that we still have a little bit of time. I want to, to get that into my formal application. But I'll just address the first piece first about using her water supply, is in a recent conversation with her, where I wanted to get sort of a written agreement that we had discussed this and that that would be okay. As we talked a little further, we decided that it actually wasn't really necessary to use her water. So even though she is considered somebody that is part of the first, you know, a part of the proposal that you're looking at, she is currently not really part of it anymore, because I don't need the water from her. But her and I have developed a very nice relationship. Obviously, it's very close proximity to the, to the church. When we first met and she was open to the water supply being used, I absolutely discussed that I wanted that to be something that, that she would open up to the congregation. I asked her if she had young people, which I'm assuming there are families and young kids that are in the congregation. And so she was open to that. In the recent conversation that we had, which was a follow-up from the original proposal back in June, it was nice. We got even a little bit more in-depth and we talked about really wanting to work together, because she said that, you know, we talked about just scheduling and August, she has, I think it's the anniversary of the church, so there's a possibility of some, some events taking place there. She's also working with the Harambe Foundation, or, or, I'm not sure what that is, an organization. I mean, I know what it is, but I don't know how they call, is it an organization, I guess? And so she said that they may also be using the space at some time. So I'm totally open to being flexible. I said it is kind of close quarters back there. I don't want to interfere or infringe on parking. I also want the folks from the church to feel part of the project that I'm proposing and vice versa. And yeah, does that answer Rita?
Yep, yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Bonnie, this is Steve Shabbat. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you. Hi.
Okay, thanks for being here with us. Actually, just forgive me if, you know, I read this a little while, quite a while ago when I first got it, so forgive me if I'm stating the obvious here, but I just want to make sure there's no cost, right? You don't charge for this.
Mm-mm.
Okay. And I don't believe the horses are not housed at the site, right? You have another site where the horses?
Yes, yes. So it's just to bring the horses there three days a week for three-hour blocks of time.
Okay, great. Now, have you, I think you said you modeled this after another program. I mean, this is, this is kind of new to me, so if you've done that, you know, if you could just give us a little bit of the other program and how they gauge their success, which means how, how will you gauge whether your program is successful in meeting its goals?
Okay, I wonder, and Amy suggested this, and I'm gonna give it a whirl, but can I screen share? Can I try to screen share? Like, I had, had submitted some nice photos from the summer program, which is what I'm modeling this after, because we had a chance to actually work with the City of Kingston kids.
Bonnie, I'm just gonna jump in. I'm gonna promote you to a panelist, which will put you on video, and then you should be able to screen share from there, okay?
Okay.
Alright, so I'm gonna get you on video now. I like to warn people. Alright, so since you came on, you know, there you go, and you have to unmute yourself.
Me myself, and there.
And then on the bottom of the screen, you should be able to see a green, it says "Share Screen," if you press that.
Press that first before I hit the tab where I have my piece that I want to share with you, correct?
Either, either way, should be fine.
Okay, let's do "Share Screen," "Host Disabled," "Participant Screen Sharing." Says it's disabled.
Oh, our IT guy doesn't let this happen. One thing that you could do is email me really quickly and I could then put it on the screen?
Um, sure, let's do that. Is that okay? I'm so sorry. Let me see.
It's okay. Our IT just put, our IT specialist put on a block on that for, so we don't get bombed.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so let me just get into, okay, so you, let me just, I don't know if I'll be still And where is it that I'm emailing to? A-S-H-A-U-T.
At Kingston-NY.gov. This will take me a minute to do, if, once it gets through, Steve, so if you have other questions, maybe we could.
Yeah, I can still hear you guys if anybody wants to ask me anything while I'm doing this. Oh, I'm so sorry. This was like, I wasn't expecting this, so I have it on a different spot.
I can try.
You know, it is part of the application, but I don't know if it was --
That I can do. No promises.
Okay, thanks, Amy. I'm, okay, here I got it, Amy. So I think I can shoot this email off and hopefully that will send. Alright, any luck, Andrea? Did it come through?
Alright, I got the email.
Okay. So something happened to it, because it shifted, maybe?
That's what was sent to me.
Yeah, I'm sure it shifted. It's not your fault. It just, it might have, I might have sent the word version versus the PDF.
That's all I have.
Yeah, there are only six pictures. They were just all on, arranged on one page, but yeah, as long as we can see them, that's still the same content. So I don't know if that's helpful for, for you all to just get a better idea of what the -- So I don't know if that's helpful for 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 you all to just get a better idea of what the interaction is like, the kids and horses.
Steve, you're muted. I'm gonna end the screen share.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Bonnie, so were they were they pictures of your program or someone else's?
It's my program.
Are they yours? All right, so is it, is this your brainchild? Or did you hear about it somewhere else and model your program after that?
Okay, I'm sorry you're breaking up a little bit. Can you just repeat the question?
There we go. The light didn't come on for some reason. Yeah, I'm just wondering if if this is your brainstorm or you saw it someplace and modeled your program after it?
Is it coming, having the organization sun raise? Is that, was that my idea to have the organization, to start an organization with horses?
Yeah, yeah, to have this kind of program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's my idea. Yeah, my organization has been here for three years now in Kingston. This is where going into our, this will be going into our fourth year coming up this July.
Okay, great. How do you gauge your success? By smiles on their faces when they leave?
Well, that's a big part of it. It's that's the immediate sort of response. And then the other piece that really has, you know, shown me the success and how important this has been to our community is what the parents are telling me. And I was able to, I don't know if you've had a chance to read them, but I did submit some letters as support materials with my application from various parents. And I have parents call me all the time. And the, you know, one of the nice things about my organization, or I think at least is a nice thing. I try to make it a nice thing. It's important to me is to is to have it so that everything is custom designed. So I get calls from parents. You know, my child has a learning disability. My child has a physical disability, you know, can you accommodate? And it really, it doesn't, so far, it hasn't mattered what what they've said in terms of being able to come up with something that is beneficial. And and again, measured by, you know, the child seems to do better socially in school. I mean, horses have so, so much obviously to teach us. And when you're around horses, there is a lot of, you know, a lot to be shared, but you know, that I share with the kids about communication, behavior, body language, self-control, you know, interaction, all of these things that obviously spill over into other aspects of their life. And so in that way, I think it is truly beneficial. And I've had parents say, you know, thank you so much. This has really changed the child's life or our life as a family. Or, you know, thank you for being here during this pandemic. I feel very blessed that I'm able to do something like this at a time when I feel like it's very much needed, so.
Thank you. Sounds like you put a lot of thought into this.
Yeah, yeah, no, this has been my life dream. And, you know, COVID happened and it just made me realize because like a lot of small businesses and organizations, I was at a crossroads too. I'm like, how am I going to survive? Can I survive? Should I survive? And, you know, after many months of lying low and soul searching and, you know, having to to make a decision one way or the other, I realized, listen, this is really, you know, I couldn't have foreseen this in a million years as none of us could. But this is exactly why I started this organization, was to be there for people, was to help, you know, offer some comfort, offer some connection to the animals. And and I feel like never has it been as important as it is now.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thanks so much for considering.
All right, so I'm going to call on Teresa Thomas Washington from Read and Write Program. Just give me. All right, you're in. All you have to do is unmute yourself. And then if you would like to be on video, just let me know.
No, that's all right. Not right now.
All right, welcome Teresa. If you could keep the opening to five minutes around and then Steve will open it up to questions.
Okay, I was gonna let my director speak on behalf of the program and I can answer any questions. Is that all right?
Sure, who would you like me to add on here?
It's Jahan.
Okay, here we go. All right, Jahan, you're able to speak. There you go.
Hi.
On video?
Oh, no video. Okay, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about my experiences with the Read and Write Program and then also my experiences as a teacher and the impact that the Read and Write Program has on the community. So again, my name is Jahan Worthy and I am currently a high school history teacher and an early college professor. One of the reasons why I became a teacher was actually because Ms. Teresa, the executive director, hired me to tutor some of the kids at the Read and Write Program after I graduated in 2011. And for those who may be listening who don't know, the Read and Write Program, it was founded over 25 years ago and it's the only free year round supplemental literacy program, providing early intervention, accepting children at four and a half in Kingston. And so connecting with students and working on their reading and writing skills during the after school program was and still is one of the most enriching experiences that I've I've had. And that is truly a testament to the influential power of this program. In addition to it helping me to determine my career, I'm always deeply moved by the children and the parents that I meet every year, especially, you know, when I work with them and I hear parents begging like, please take my kids. Like, I can't afford childcare. I have to go to work. Like, please take them. This program is free. And we all know that the pandemic has kind of changed the way in which the Read and Write Program operates. It used to operate as an after school program, but now it's operating during the school day where we help students log in, attend their classes and complete their schoolwork. And this is really, really important right now because as a full time classroom teacher, I know that connecting with students and making sure that they stay on on track and complete their work is like one of the hardest things to do because all of the sudden these students are being tasked to do things that we don't normally do in college, to make sure that they're on the computer to do their work. And parents aren't always there to to help them do that. And just a month or so ago, I had a mom like crying because her child fell behind and she felt like she was failing because she couldn't sit with her kid to make sure she logged in their classes and completed her work. And, you know, she needs the job to survive, to make sure that the kids have food and and clothes and and everything else. So I know that the children and parents need that 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 support. And that's why programs like the Read and Write Program are so, so important, especially now. It it supports parents by allowing them to go to work and keeps them from feeling the burden and the despair of the mom that I talked about shortly before. So it's always been important again, and it's just extremely important now. It provides a safe space for students to engage with their schools while helping them to be successful. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you want to have any questions for Teresa? Jeffrey?
Hi Teresa.
Hello, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey Ventura Morrell, I just have a question. Reading your application, it's, it's, as you know, we're not allowed by HUD to fund, we're only allowed to fund new programs. And reading your application, it seems like this is very similar to the to the program that you've been doing. So can you tell us a little bit of how this is different or new?
Well, although the the baseline of the program remains the same, the program change every year. We bring in different people every year to work with the kids or teach them, whether it be the lady that was just talking about her horses. That would be something that I would, actually, I talked to Amy about it, getting in contact with her to have her come and work with the kids with that. Our basis is always there because the main thing about the kids in our community is their being behind in their reading and their writing. And that's something that they need no matter what they do in their life. So so that's why that is always going to be the basis. And without that, our kids probably will remain stuck. But every year, like last year, we worked with the Reese Foundation, I mean, the Reese Group and the kids did a project with painting the side of their wall and stenciling on the side of the wall. If you drive by on Spring Street, you'll see the art project that they worked on. But it wasn't just stenciling. They had, they sat down with them over a period of three weeks, two, twice a week. And they talked about the community. They learned about different things in the community. They took feedback from the children to find out what was interested to them, why they liked living here, why they didn't like living here. They had the kids made make up different words and sentences. And that's how they determine what colors they use in stencils. A person will pick out a specific sentence that one of the child, one of the children's use and that's what they would use on the wall. So I know you hear Read and Write and we've been here for over 30 years. But I believe that the main thing in the community that the children need is that basic foundation. And then everything else that we give is in addition and supportive of those skills and everything, but broadens their horizon. Like we took them to, we took them to museums. We had the lighthouse people come up and teach them about the Hudson River and how far it goes. And they did a puzzle up in the park about that. They went and they walked along the river and they discussed that. They they've done so many different things. So every time we do, we work with the kids, it's a different group of kids sometimes. Sometimes it's same kids, but we always get new kids. There's new ideals. We have like poets coming in. We have writers coming in and talking to the kids. We had Drew came in and did dance and the spoken word with the older kids. So it's always something that is changing. And I know that yous want different project, but I think that this is one of the, one of the, I'll say, most important and valuable programs in the community. As if it wasn't, it wouldn't be here for 30 years. And like Jahan being a testament, this is why she went on and got her double bachelor, master's degree and became a teacher and a professor. And we have so many stories of that happening with the different people that children that participated, that is now out there doing wonderful things. I could think of TJ James that is running the association in New York to get the vaccines out to all of the African American churches. He was a Read and Write, him and his brother started in Read and Write when they was elementary. So now they're growing into these great people that doing wonderful things. So any other questions? Jeffrey?
No, that was, that was my only question. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Everybody good? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so next up we have Christine Hine from People's Place. Christine, I just let you, yep, you want to be on video?
It doesn't matter to me. It's easier for you just to listen or to see and listen? I'm good.
We're good. All right.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to see Christine, let me know. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I am here to, I think that pretty much all of you are familiar with People's Place. I am the executive director there. And the program that we are coming up with is a new program to People's Place. It's something that we have been researching and thinking about for two years now and that the time seems to be right. It's the People's Place Self-Care Education and Wellness Empowerment Center. And this new program is being implemented with one concern in mind, and that is the well being of our recipients. They are often the segment of our population who has no expendable income to learn healthy food habits, quality exercises, traditional health modalities, stress reduction practices. I could go on and on. The People's Place mission is to not only help with food and clothing, which we obviously are most well known for, but also with life essentials. And this includes the well being of the individual. Like food and clothing, all areas of health, not just the physical, you know, is a basic human right. And we really feel that this is the time for us to step up. Might say, well, why People's Place? You know, areas with the highest rates of food insecurities also tend to have higher rates of uninsured individuals within the community. And People's Place is right at the heart of the food desert in Ulster County. We have daily contact with individuals who are most in need within our community. Just to give you an overview, People's Place is the largest food pantry in Ulster County with over 11,000 households in our database. Since last year, 2020, we had 1,200 new households come to us for services that never came to us before. It equals over 1.1 million meals. So like I just previously said, we are the heart of the food desert in Ulster County. So we see people all the time who are the exact population that is struggling in some of the areas that this empowerment center is going to offer. Several studies from FRAC, which is the Food Resource Action Center, outlines that possible health conditions that are linked to food insecurity, such as diabetes, depression, anxiety, heart disease, high levels of stress. And we really feel that the team that we have, we've been successful in our other programming, that we would actively be disrupting disrupting the cycle in our Kingston community to try to help individuals. Over the last two weeks, we've done several studies, surveys, I'm sorry, surveys in our community to people who come to our bounty table and to our food pantry. And just to give you a quick overview of that, 90% of them who were questioned feel that they have. feel that they have fatigue every single day. 100% of them felt that they have stress at least twice a week. 70% of these people have had an increase in stress since COVID. Out of the folks that we've surveyed, 43% say stress has taken a physical toll on them, which is a correlation, or even with the country numbers, there was a survey by Kaiser Family Foundations that said 45% of adults nationally say COVID has had negatively affected their mental health. You know, this number actually increases for women and minorities. These are the populations most likely to report a major mental health impact. And many of them are uninsured. And many of these people are the people who we see every day coming for food that we have built alliances with, who trust us. 93% of the people we polled said that they would be interested in taking a class at People's Place if it was offered and if it was free. So that is what we are trying to, to do. I see a question, so I can stop anytime. Patrick? I can't hear him.
Unmute Patrick. Run button, Patrick.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I'm sorry, I'm an old timer. Okay. Question is, these people are feeling stressed because of their financial situation. Is that correct? I mean, a lot of it.
Yes.
There's emotional, there's, you know, societal situations.
Of course.
There's emotional situations. But if they were secure more financially, would, is, is that a, is that a question that comes up much? I mean, you didn't mention anything about finances. You mentioned nutrition. You mentioned, you know, safety. But, you know, when people are financially secure, other stressors go away, you know? I mean, it, it can help. Are you, are you, are you feel, has anybody coming in and saying like, I don't feel good because I'm not financially secure?
Well, pretty much 90, I would say 99% of the people we see are not financially secure. If they were, they probably wouldn't be coming to People's Place, at least not for the food pantry and for the free bounty table. Right now, the thrift store isn't open. So I don't think that you can separate, I mean, yeah, I totally believe, you know, finances, financial stresses definitely room heavy on folks. But that's why even people who are food insecure, they tend to eat, they don't have this skill set, they haven't been taught necessarily how to cook, they don't have access to healthy food a lot of times. And these are part of the programs that we are going to, I didn't get to run through some of them, but they were in the packet of the programs that we are going to offer. Some of them are nutrition education. The dietitian is in, which would be conversations with the dietitian, nutrition hot topics, talking about concerns for individuals, community-led nutrition interest groups. But along with that, we're, yep, sorry. Go ahead, Patrick.
I'm a school teacher, so, you know, I see the same things you're seeing pretty much every single day. I mean, you're seeing it more. I've been a school teacher for 30 years. I mean, we know what's happening out there. And I think as a school teacher, of course, in my, in my realm, I always, you know, everybody thinks, you know, about what they can do, right? So I'm a school teacher, and I think about education. And I often think that teaching people about their, how to save money, if they have even a dime, I don't know, even the smallest amount of money, how to manage their finances, how to pay their bills. These are the kind of things that make you feel better about yourself, make your life better. I mean, who doesn't feel better when they pay off a bill or when they feel like they can pay something? I mean, these are the things that make us, I'm just saying, it's only a part, it's only a small part. There's lots of things. There's mental illness, as we know, there's nutritional factors. But, but the one thing you didn't mention, the one thing you didn't mention was education about how to manage your finances. Now, they have finances too. Every human being has finances, no matter how small they are or how large they are. Every human being has to manage their finances to get by, to live. You didn't mention one thing about finances.
I did.
I'm wondering, where, where is that education happening?
Okay, so I just didn't get to it because I didn't talk about any of the programming, but it's ironic that you bring that up because we had a meeting with representatives from the Mid-Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Mike, Matt, Mike Matone, Mike Campbell, and Sarah Short. And we're talking about doing an exclusive financial educational partnership with them for financial wellness, which is part of this program that we are trying to do. We're going to have several different modalities that are covered within, you know, the self-care, education, and wellness empowerment. I mean, it's financial wellness. One of the ideas we have come up with is a piggy bank budget and kind of work with people that, if they come and use certain things, the money that they would save would go into it. I've kind of had the bank looking at a program that, once they do the educational pieces, which would be through People's Place, at People's Place, so it's in a comfort zone for individuals. They know us, we're friendly faces. Once they finish that, they will give them some type of financial incentive, reward, whatever, for going through the class and open a bank account with them, and then continue to do financial education. So that's just one prong of it. It wasn't mentioned in the original packet because I hadn't been able to get in contact and set the meeting up with Mike Campbell and Mike Matone, but we actually had that meeting two days ago. And we have an outline with several points for that. So, you know, there's financial wellness. There is journal writing, meditation. I mean, I can go on and on, gratitude workshops. Go ahead, Patrick.
I would just like to say thank you. And I, I'd appreciate if you looked into that because I can tell you right now, you know, people's finance, when you have your finance, when you have, even if you're in trouble, if you're, if you're on a good path, right, you feel better about yourself, you feel healthier. And I'm not talking about, I'm talking about any path, mental health path, wellness path. Also, financial wellness path is just as important as those other ones. They all matter. And we gotta, we gotta, we gotta come at this from all directions, and I appreciate you doing that. I really do. And I think, don't let that go. Don't let that piece go. Don't let that piece go. Because that's probably the most important piece. Because when you have financial wellness, you can buy good food for yourself and your family. You can, you can then buy clothing for yourself and your family. Those are, you know, once you, I mean, it's just a part, I know, it's just a piece, but it's an important piece. And I appreciate that you're looking into it, and I appreciate that you are, you know, on board with that. That's, that's so important.
So I just would like to give you, being you brought it up, and it, it's very, it seems close to your heart. Some of the workshop topics that we talked about was basic budgeting, protecting your identity, incentives to open a checking savings account with the credit union matching program, completion seminar, senior savings and budgeting, also doing something with a Spanish-speaking build-out program to, to, so to try to alleviate the language barrier. You know, those are just, and they would probably be between 30 to 45-minute workshops and series. Along with being in-person, we would have them pre-recorded so we could share them online for folks that can't do it. So, you know, that's the financial part of it. Yes, go ahead.
Wouldn't it be so nice, you know, corporations match people, right? 5% of their income, stuff like that. But imagine a person who is like on the edge of life, right? They're, they're, they, they need your help at the food, at the People's Place. And, you know, they save $100 and we match that. I mean, or we match, you know, 20% of that or something. Wouldn't that be amazing, you know, for them to see that, you know, the community, well, if you save $100, we'll match you $20, or we'll match you $5 or $10, every $100 you make. Wouldn't that be an incentive? Wouldn't that be amazing for them to, to do that? Just $100. You save $100, we'll give you 150, or we'll, we'll do something instead of, you know, maybe some other things that are working. But that might be just another avenue to excite, to, in, in, inspire, to, you know, just give people hope, you know?
Right. That's what I'm trying to get the credit union to give the individuals who take that part of, when the programs that we offer, some type of financial reward for participating in the program and to then invest it, you know, bank it. Try to create some type of, what our, what our avenue was going to be, was to try to create some type of emergency fund. I mean, we're also talking about folks who have emergency every day, but.
That's an awesome thought. That's an awesome thought you have there. Because I think, you know, the old adage is, you know, you teach a person to fish and they have fish for a lifetime.
Right.
You know, you give a person a fish, they have dinner.
Sure.
So that's, 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 that's that adage, that's that, that's that saying, you know, that's the truth of the, of the matter. If you can, if you could work on that a little bit, I think, along with all the other things, mental health, nutrition, all the wonderful things you're doing, but that is a key, another key factor that I think needs to be implemented in almost every program that we do. And it's lacking, it's lacking in every program. Housing lacks it. Every program that we give people money, it lacks financial education, and we need to do that.
Well, we're going to try if we get the grant.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So I, I did want to bring out, just because I thought it was serendipitous, if you, I guess, that would be the correct word. We were working on this, this empowerment center and coming up with different things, whether it just be, not just nutrition education, but journal writing and meditation and yoga and physical, physical education and financial education. And today on Good Morning America, there was a whole segment about how powerful journal writing is, and that according to Dr. Sean Llewellyn, it's almost as effective as talk therapy, not to replace, obviously, professional therapists. But it does have a real place in the world of helping individuals and teaching people to help themselves. That's really what we're trying to do with this center. It seems like it's a natural next step for People's Place to do this, to, to help people get the self-care wellness tools, to be able to lift them up and empower them to be more in control of their own life, whether it be health, whether it be physical, whether it be mental. And I really feel like the staff that we have, the volunteers we have, we have the space, you know, we're poised to be able to do that now. Other questions?
Thanks very much, Christine. That was great. Does anybody have any further questions? We do kind of have to move forward. We got a lot, several other people here to speak. But we appreciate you being here, Christine.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
All right. So our next speaker is from the Kingston, Kingston Midtown Arts District, Laura Dordana, Dordano, excuse me. And then just so I have a heads up, or you have a heads up, I'll call on legal services next. So, Laurie, you should be here. I know you have to unmute yourself, but would you like to be on video?
No, this is just fine. Yes.
Welcome. If you could keep the opening to about five minutes or so, and then we'll, Steve will open it up to the questions. Thank you.
Yes, yes, very good. Yeah. So as Andrea stated, that I represent the Midtown Arts District. We're the Department of Regional Art Workers and known as the Draw. We've recently moved into a new space in Energy Square, so you might have seen our space if you've gone down Cedar Street or Iwo Jima Drive, because we're on the corner. And so we moved in there in July. The Draw has been working with, well, I'm a educator as well, and was at the high school for almost 30 years, working in the art department. And developed this pop-up gallery group program for teens, which was a work-study program that engaged kids in the arts and the arts industry in Midtown. And we popped up and created galleries. We showed Kingston High School alumni work. And in the meantime, the kids were engaged in the whole piece of the art industry that was about exhibition and display, meeting local artists. I think we had, well, we've had over 20 shows so far. And we've moved around. Pop-up is right because we started with very little. But since we've moved to Energy Square, in the meantime, we were at the Y, and since we moved to Energy Square, we still have that program, which has been very successful. 100% of our kids that we've worked with have graduated from high school. Most of them have gone on to colleges, and it's very exciting to me because they come back and said, I got to be the print studio assistant. I got to work in the gallery and I got to, you know, so they even got jobs in the arts field when they went to college, which was super exciting for me to hear. As we've moved to Energy Square, of course, COVID, in July, we moved in. In August, we offered programming for over 72 kids in person. In-person is really important to us, and I know COVID has really restricted that, but we've been able to maintain our programming even through the fall. So we just stopped at Christmas. We're on a hiatus. We're coming back in February now that the numbers are better. But one of the reasons we've looked at developing this program is we see a need, especially now for high school students who have gone almost a year, and it looks like they're going to go the rest of the year, art students in particular, because they don't have access to studio space. They don't have access to hands-on instruction. It's been kind of debilitating, and really, especially for the high school kids that are looking toward their future. The arts industry in Kingston is big. There are over 60 art businesses right in Midtown alone, and one of our driving forces is the idea of a spiral mentoring relationship. We've developed that through the PUG program, and now we're looking to build two new programs because of the needs we see in students right now. We want to do a wellness through the creative arts, which is primarily focused on creative expression. Then we want to do a portfolio program, so portfolio development. When you're going off to college as an art student, you have to have a portfolio. You also need to show that you've had some volunteer work and some experiences, and all of those things during COVID have been really kind of shut down. We've had such great success with the PUG program. We follow those students throughout their life, and many of them actually have come back and are able to work with us through our teaching programs. So they work as teaching assistants and assistants to the teaching artists that come through. We've hired over 22 artists, so they've worked with the local artists in our area. Again, a resource. We keep funneling back and forth, creating mentorships and relationships with the artists and the art businesses that are available to them in, in Kingston. Our students have gone on then to work at some of the art industries here in town. You know, you can find them at RNF, you can find them at City Hall, you can find them at Bailey's. So those successes have led us to realize, we've created this industrial piece of workforce development so that the students who are interested in the arts can learn about arts education as they work as teaching assistants. Then now we want to look at it from the art perspective, still around the idea of professional development. Many people think that the arts is like, oh, my God, my kid is going to be in the corner of a room starving. And the truth is that the arts are a great learning ground, just for life in general. But the arts particularly allow for the development of personal voice, self-esteem, problem solving. The idea of being able to put a creative solution to kind of any problem, I mean, that's one of the things that the arts teaches. We also have all kinds of museums in the area, galleries, things that kids can learn from. So what we're looking to do is to use these two new programs to provide opportunities for those students to really explore their personal vision, but also work with our local resources as mentors. And we're going to, it'll be an after-school program. It's two distinct, the wellness program, oh, hi Kitty, and the professional portfolio development program. But also, we're going to be holding an open studio, so that'll be a mentor-based open studio that all of those students can come to once a week after school, providing them with access to materials and tools. We also have printing presses that they can use, and also developing their portfolios, their writing skills. We'll be writing artist statements. So really. Uh, we'll be writing artist statements, um, so really developing communication skills. All artists nowadays have to be social media mavens, um, so you know, learning about that uh as well, like how to promote themselves. One major aspect of all of our programs is that we also, we always have an exhibition opportunity. And so the, these two programs as well will have at least two exhibition opportunities for the work that they do. And again, being able to take pride in the hard work that you've done and share it with the public is a really um intense experience. But it also draws out the best in students and it also, they get to share it with the community, so it becomes a community resource. One thing that we love about our new space is that it's a storefront, so we like to make what we do public. And um, yeah, I'll answer any questions. Yes.
Dude, can you tell me the, I'm sorry, Patrick, like I said.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
This is new, this, this stuff is, um, I'm just getting used to it and I, and uh, I'm, I'm kind of liking it. But can you tell me the age group that you're dealing with?
Oh, yeah, sure. I, um, it'll be high school fifteen through eighteen.
I can tell you, I've been, I've been an educator for thirty years and the arts is the true way, the true way. To teach is through the arts and anybody tells you different is wrong. The true way to teach anybody is through the arts, mathematics, social studies, English. Arts is the way to go. It's the only way to teach kids. It's the only way to teach people and I, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I'm a devotee of that. And as a matter of fact, um, just a little bit about me. Uh, when I was involved in teaching, one of my major, the reason I started the PUG program is because you can teach anything through the arts. I, I believe. Um, and I also have written many curriculums around that, but I love the opportunity to tie learning in through the arts. That's why going to the businesses, uh, when you go to see a show, my objective is to see the artwork, but also to take kids backstage. And see how the installation was done, you know, to see how things are stored. So those are all experiences that um we will build for these kids.
All right, Laura?
Yes.
Hi, this is Steve Shabbitt. Um. This is, this is some really cool stuff. Um, once upon a time, way back when I was an art student at, at the high school. And some of the things you're talking about, you know, they just, they didn't explain these things. Putting together a portfolio at the end of my senior year, uh, to get credit for, I think for regions credit. But you know, they're saying you gotta put together a portfolio. I, I didn't even know what that meant. Um, and nobody really explains stuff like that. So you know, you're moving on. And when I, when I went to college, I was really kind of behind the times, you know, as far as doing things like this. And, and even nowadays, you know, I'm still, still doing art, but you know, look at me. You can imagine how, how well-versed I am in the. You, you know, Facebook and, and those kind of things and getting my work out there. So you know, these, these are big things. I think, you know, back in my time and probably now, peo- young people don't know what they're going to do with an art degree. Or even, you know, taking art in school, what is it going to be good for? What can I use it for? I mean, it's great. I, I love doing it, but you know, it hasn't, certainly hasn't been my career, that's for sure. You know, so I, I think this is, this is really gonna be great, you know, for kids to have someplace they can go. And you know, learn the realities of, of being an artist or an art student. Uh, and, and moving forth into the world and, and continuing with it. I think.
Yeah, you know, Steve, I'd like to address that specifically because um, the arts are not just for artists, you know. So many people engage in the arts, uh, you continue to make art, uh, people continue to sing in a choir, you know. Um, it becomes a kind of an avocation as opposed to a vocation. And I think people that are driven to the arts, uh, they're gonna find their place. There are design fields, there are, you know, all kinds of industries that they can get involved with. But um, the arts is just a background for life. I personally believe it's immensely powerful. And um, I'm dedicated to, you know, helping kids find that path. Through the arts, whatever path it is they're gonna take, yeah.
Thanks very much. This is, this is great to talk to you and not just read about it. Uh, does anybody else have any? Okay, Laura, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much for your time. Stop by Cedar Street sometime and check us out.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, so next up is Legal Services. I believe that's Erin. You're here to uh speak. Is there anybody else?
Uh, no, it's just myself tonight.
Oh, great. Do you want to be on screen or is this?
No, it's been a very long day. We'll just stick to audio.
Alrighty.
So I will try and keep this uh close, as close to five minutes as possible. Um, good evening. My name is Erin Baroud. Uh, I am the attorney in charge of the Ulster County Office of Legal Services of the Hudson Valley. Um, I think you all know by now that Legal Services of the Hudson Valley is the only comprehensive free civil legal service provider in Ulster County. And we assist where clients who can't afford an attorney in civil areas of law, um, where a basic human need is at stake. Um, we don't take or accept any fee generating cases. And over the past several years, we've been a successful CDBG grantee, including um our very effective eviction prevention program in Kingston City Court. This year, the application guidelines required a new program to be proposed. And based on data we've collected over the past couple of years, we've determined that a population that is in need of assistance are the elders. Residing in the city of Kingston. Um, so we are proposing a new project entitled the City of Kingston Elder Legal Services Project. Um, the objective is to conduct outreach and provide civil legal services to City of Kingston seniors. Um, HUD defines seniors um as a presumed class in need of services. And they are required to be um sixty-two years of age and older, which is so uh different than some of our grants. The goal for the proposed project is to maintain and stabilize housing for seniors uh that are of low to moderate income. Through legal assistance and housing matters, as well as income stabilization through eviction prevention. Uh, and review of advocacy, review and advocacy for benefits and assistance programs. That contribute to affording a senior's basic needs of shelter, utilities, food. Um, by earmarking funding specifically dedicated to Kingston seniors. It's going to en- ensure that they do not have to compete with uh for resources in the upcoming year. When many people are going to be seeking the same assistance due to the um historic economic downturn we're facing. Our twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one New York State funding has been cut, um, specifically several of our grants that assist seniors. So therefore, without this funding, we are going to be looking at cuts to services in Kingston. That aren't covered by our other CDBG funding that, that we've uh received. So this is gonna include a lot of services. We found that seniors need special outreach and special attention when it comes to stabilizing housing. Um, even before the devastating effects of COVID nineteen, there was an underlying problem. There was a house, there's a housing crisis that extends throughout the Hudson Valley, includes Ulster County. And when a senior's housing is jeopardized, it's critical that they have an experienced attorney assisting them. Under current housing laws and someone who's able to connect them with community uh partners and providers. Maybe able to assist them with rental rears or other services that they need. Um, outside of senior housing complexes, um, there's many uh City of Kingston seniors. Who are struggling to maintain housing under fixed incomes. Um, and then they have the added pressure of gentrification that is occurring in Kingston. And that pushes area rents higher and often results in landlords looking to um move these tenants out. Uh, so that a new set of, of tenants can come in at a higher rate. So these are economic pressures that are added to the regular housing. Legal issues that we routinely see in um senior housing locations like Yasmin Towers, Governor Clinton. Um, our services are holistic. If the scope of illegal issues outside of the area. That's covered by the CDBG grant, we have the ability to internally refer the client to a unit for other in-kind services. Um, that are funded by other sources, such as a senior veterans that has a veteran's benefit issue. They're not getting all the benefits they're entitled to, therefore, um, you know, we can refer them to our veterans unit. And they can get more specialized services. We also have programs where we can assist um people. In getting more managed long-term care hours or something of that nature. So in twenty-twenty, um, we opened eighty-two cases for uh Kingston residents that were ages sixty-two and older. And of those eighty-two cases, uh, forty-eight were for housing matters and another eight were for um income stabilization. Uh, including SNAP benefits, social security issues, uh, temporary assistance. And we use those numbers, um, although they have been lower, they were lower this year than they have been in past. But we use those numbers to project who we would serve in the upcoming grant cycle. Um, so I just wanted to briefly describe a typical scenario that we see when we assist seniors. And hopefully this will highlight um to why we believe a program like this is critical. So a senior moves to senior housing after losing their lifelong home to foreclosure. And typically we see this because the said senior can't afford their mortgage payment or property taxes um on their current fixed income. Sometimes there's a reverse mortgage uh issue in there or some other outlying issue. But so now the seniors in senior housing and they're being evicted from senior housing. Um, and oftentimes they don't know why they're being evicted. Um, these matters can be complicated and, and a lot of elements to them. And you know, a lot of, a reoccurring instance we see is where uh senior cup is being evicted due to a bed bug issue or hoarding behavior. Which kind of disproportionately affects elders. So a landlord is telling the senior that the bed bugs are their fault because management said they treated the apartment before the last tenant moved out. Um, so at that point, we would intervene, we would advocate for the tenant, um, the client and, and. Most likely try and convince management to treat the apartment again. Um, say the management treats the apartment or wants to treat the apartment, but says that the apartment's too crowded. And the client won't clear their belongings. Um, most likely it's not that they won't clear their belongings. That they're not physically able to move their belongings because of age or disability. So the management brings the senior to court, um, and we can step in and we assist in advocating in court where there's legal defenses. But because we have a holistic approach, we can enlist community partners, family members, um, do internal referrals. And get other services in place, which sometimes would include housekeeping services. Or you know, getting a storage unit rented, um, so that we can move their stuff out. So that the apartment can be effectively, uh, you know, cleaned or fumigated. And then we can usually negotiate in court or outside of court, a settlement agreement, which will keep a client in their home. Um, and this work is so imperative because where else is this population going to go if they lose their protected housing? Um, we're familiar with the elder population in Kingston City. We're familiar with the senior housing facilities. We're able to provide outreach and directly connect to those seniors. Um, we're an active referral resource for local and state legislators and our constituents are facing these issues. Our office is accessible to seniors down in Aaron Court. Um, and despite the pandemic, we are conducting appointments in person if we need to. This is critical of the seniors because many of them lack the technology that's become so prevalent in the last year. And for all of those reasons, um, we are asking the advisory board and the council to fully fund our um twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two elder legal project. Um, so that the City of Kingston seniors have protection that they need in the upcoming year. So, thank you. I think Patrick. But you're muted.
Patrick, unmute. But. I can't hear. Just, hold on, you're, you're good.
I hear that in the beginning of your statement, you said that you're gonna. Provide seniors protection. Because there's so many people vying for help right now, that, but you're gonna, you're gonna provide seniors. Kind of a protection that they will get the help before anybody else. Is that, is that, was that? Is that something I heard in the beginning of your statement?
So we have lost our se- our funding that is specific to seniors um from other sources. So if a senior in the city of Kingston does not fall under one of our other sources of assistance. And right now we do have COVID assistance, um, which, so maybe some seniors would fall under that, but not all. Uh, we would not have the resources to assist them necessarily without this funding.
But you're, but, but, but what I heard was that you were going to. Allow seniors to have the first crack at funding. Is that, was I mistaken in your, did I hear something wrong?
Well, this is one project that goes in with our other funding sources. So it wouldn't be necessarily the first crack, but yes, they would be um prioritized. King's, seniors in Kingston City would be prioritized with this funding over, um. You know, other people that came to us that didn't fit under one of our funding sources.
And you're saying that you've, you've helped eighty-four people last year?
Uh, we've opened, yes, we assisted eighty-four senior cases, which. We use the term senior a little differently in our organization. A lot of times it's over sixty, but over sixty-two plus, we had eighty. Did I say eighty-four or eighty-two? Sorry.
That's all. It's okay.
Um. And the, of those eighty, it was eighty-two, sorry. Of those eighty-two cases, um, forty-eight were housing and eight were income stabilization. So those are the only cases that would really fall under this CDBG grant. Other cases, you know, elder abuse cases and that sort of thing. Um, we have other funding sources that would have to address those. We don't believe those fall directly under the uh CDBG guidance.
All right, one more question. Now, some of the things that you said. Uh, are all wonderful, wonderful, wonderful things. I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, we all do. They sound like they could be handled by maybe a social worker or someone not at the, not that requires a lawyer. I mean, are some of these things, is everything that you're handling need to be required by a lawyer? And are they being handled by a lawyer or are they being handled by other people? I mean, is our money, what I'm saying, what I'm thinking about are the CBG money is. Is it, are all these things required of a lawyer to do or, or some of them?
So, uh, we have some attorneys that will do, you know, a gray area work. The majority, obviously ninety percent of our work is legal work, legal cases, and but uh providing advice and counsel. But you know, just the nature of our services, a lot of times there is nowhere else for their, for people to go. Um, you know, APS won't get involved or hasn't gotten involved. And we spend some of our time, you know, getting APS involved or getting other agencies to try and assist these people. In conjunction with and to make sure that their legal rights are being secured. So it kind of encompasses it. Um, seniors have some extra layers. It's not just, um, you know, a straight eviction case. A lot of times we have to kind of tug here and there. Um, but I, you know, it is legal work, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. I see Steve is on the question. Are there any other questions or Steve's on the phone? Is there any other questions for Erin? Steve, do you have any questions for Erin?
I do not. No, thank you, Erin, very much for being here. Um, it, it sounds like a, it sounds like a good pro.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Erin.
Have a good night.
All right, next up is Family of Woodstock. So I see, uh, I saw Michael here. I don't see Michael here. If anybody's here to speak on Family of Woodstock, can you just raise your hand? And to raise your hands, you go to the bottom. Here we go. All right. All right, you just have to unmute yourself. Actually, this might be Michael.
I did.
All right, do you want to be on screen or are you just audio?
I don't need to.
All right.
Hello, everybody.
Um, go if you want to just, you know, for keep it to around five minutes, just give us an overview and then Steve will open it up.
Okay, fine. Um, I'm representing the Hodge Center, um, which, as you know, um, is in Midtown Kingston and serves the children of Midtown Kingston. Uh, the program includes a significant food program um as well as serving uh as well as running an after-school program for probably now about ten years. Uh, unfortunately, as of March, the mayor closed the uh program to children uh as a result of the pandemic. And uh we expanded the food program as part of the county and Kingston resilience program. And we uh, in July, we did run a a recreation program, but unfortunately, instead of serving up to seventy-five children as we had in the after-school program, as a result of social distancing, the facilities were only capable of serving twenty-eight children. Um, in September, when uh we expected school to resume, it resumed in a hybrid and then in a uh totally virtual basis. And a number of the children that we regularly served did not have the equipment or did not have the technical ability to um to be able to have virtual learning. And so we have set up cohorts within the program and we have been serving about twenty-eight children a day, uh connecting them through their Chromebooks to school and providing them assistance with their schoolwork. It's somewhat of a frustrating situation because uh it's not easy for the for the young people. Uh, it's not easy for the staff. There is anxiety around the COVID issue. Um, and um they don't have much flexibility in terms of the the young people's scheduling is being controlled by the schools. So, you know, it's uh uh we can't do organized recreation because different youth, they're on different classes, which have different schedules. Um, but we we know that what we're doing is important and there is socialization and um, for some of the classes, our 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 teachers, who are largely college students, as well as some senior teachers, do not have the technical ability to answer all of the question. We've been working with the Kingston School District. We've uh been able to bring in some teachers' aides um and and to connect with the schools, with the teachers, so that we can do the best job that we can of helping the children to meet their obligations. Um, at the same time, the food program has been substantial and a portion of it has been to um uh provide food to people in motels, which is an area that is not paid for. I I can't say that it's a new program. Family has fundraised to provide this for a long time. But if I I don't consider it in some way a program because it's never had real funding to do it. So we're estimating that half of the people that we're serving in area motels, which is about a hundred people a day, are there as a result of COVID and we would document that. And we would like the help to be able to pay for it. If that is not considered an open, uh, a new program, then we would like to be considered for help to pay for running from eight-thirty until three every day, which we never budgeted for and and are fundraising now to be able to pay for. Um, uh, I I would answer any questions. I'm sure you have some.
Anybody have questions for Michael?
Jeffrey?
Um, hi, Michael, this is Jeffrey Ventura Morale.
Hi, Jeffrey.
Uh, goes back to full-time. Uh, how how do you, would you uh change the program up or how would you continue it?
I I would be very surprised if the school spoke back to full-time between now and the end of June. Um, I I um, I think that there will be much more hybrid situations, but I don't think that the schools are capable or prepared to bring all of the children in five days a week. And so what we expect will happen is that the program will change and we will serve different children based upon when they are scheduled to go back into the school. Uh, but I but I think that there will be programming certainly until the end of June. And that will cost a lot more than the funding we were asking for.
Oh, thank you.
Rita?
Hi, Michael, how are you? This is Rita Worthington. Um, so uh in your application, it says that the uh program is looking for additional space to uh expand the number of youth served. Um, have you have you actually identified any additional spaces where you could where you could um expand the program?
Um, I I what I can say is that we have approached the AME Zion Church across the street. We approached it virtually immediately in the summer. And um, I I'm friendly with Pastor Bruce and we have worked with her in the past. Um, she went to the bishop and the bishop said that he couldn't approve, even though we were gonna do social distancing and we were, you know, we're very careful with that stuff. He said he couldn't let other people come into the church if he wasn't allowing the church to use by his congregation. So we're still hoping that that will change. Beyond that, um, we are hoping and we have had some conversations that when the building next door to us that has been purchased as part of Kingston Radio and Novo, that they will let us use some portion of the first floor to expand. We have also had conversation, uh, I'm sorry, Patrick, I will. Uh, we have also had conversations with uh Pastor Joy at the Clinton Avenue Church. And while we, we don't think that that's a space that we could use every day, we have had discussion about bringing twenty-two children there, socially distancing to play basketball or to be able to run around on an indoor basis. And those discussions are ongoing and seem to be very positive.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. Patrick? You have to unmute.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Michael, thank you so much to begin with. Just thank you, thank you, thank you. And the next thing is, Michael, where are you working out of? Where where are these twenty-eight children?
The twenty-eight children are at the Hodge Center. We're using both the back building and the front building. And we 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 uh had the childcare council come in, measure the space, identify how much each room could contain. Um, and uh and it the maximum is twenty-eight. We'd love it if it was more.
Michael, so important that uh you guys are doing this. And it is the hot set, is it working right now? Are you up and running right now?
Yes, we are. And we've been, we were close for a couple of days because of COVID exposure, but we've been open since Monday again.
And 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 you ran this program for a while, but now with COVID, it's it's kind of changed, right? A little bit?
It's totally changed in that we're, we we are intending within the next week or two to begin an after-school recreation program. And it may well be that some of the children that are in it will not be the same as those that come to us during the regular school hours. But uh, but we were running a full-time after-school program and a kitchen. Now we're running a full-day program and and we'll be running an after-school program within a week or two.
Well, thank, uh, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Michael, I can tell you, education is is the is the is the gateway. Education, you know, I'm an educator. You know, it's 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 what I do, it's what I think, it's it's where my mind is at. And I think education i- is the way to go. If you can educate people, they're gonna make more money. They're gonna be happier, they're gonna be healthier. And and that's what you're doing and and I just want to say thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Uh, I I do agree with you about education and I would add employment. I think collectively, we all have to work to find better jobs so that the people that live in Kingston will be able to afford to remain in Kingston. And then at the same time, I would welcome the opportunity to speak to the council about housing.
But through education, through education, that's, you know, that's one of the, that's one of the major avenues to providing for your family, to providing, you know, for your community, to providing housing for yourself and for others. You know, I mean, it the census clearly tells us that edge, that you know, the census every ten years clears it clearly tells us that education, the higher, the higher level education that someone reaches on average, the 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 more they are able to support themselves and their family and 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 have a health healthier, happier life. And I and I and I appreciate that that's the avenue you're taking and and so and wonderful. Thank you so much.
Anyone else have any questions for Michael? Okay, Michael, thanks a lot for being here with us tonight.
Thank you all and thanks for this hard work that you do as volunteers. I I uh, I I appreciate how hard it is to run a major agency like the city. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night, Mike.
Alrighty, we have up Dan Whalen from Boys and Girls and then we'll have Transart next. But Dan, you're here, you just have to unmute and you want to be on video?
I'll do you all a favor and I'll stay on audio.
Welcome.
All right, um, uh, thank you all uh for making this possible and taking the time tonight. Um, you know, I understand that this is a grueling and often thankless process for all of you. Um, so thank you for the time. The the packets are long and I know you guys put a lot into this. Um, I'm gonna do my best to stay close to the five minutes. Uh, however, I'm very excited and passionate about this program. Um, for those who haven't been around the club, I mean, obviously COVID has pushed us all away for a while, but those who may not be familiar, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, uh, our mission is to provide a safe place that enables youth uh the opportunity for positive experiences that lead um to them becoming a positive members of our community. That's the mission, that's what the Boys and Girls Club in general does. However, what most people don't know is that although we have a national model, each Boys and Girls Club is autonomous. So they all operate separately. And you know, one of the major focuses for the Boys and Girls Club of Kingston is to provide to, you know, our kids mo- typically do not have the same platform that all kids in Kingston have for success. So our focus is making sure that we provide the platform to help our talented kids be successful and lead on to productive lives. And that's really where where our our organization's focus is. Um, you know, pre-COVID and regular world, we serve eighty kids a day uh with uh about with a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty-five different kids that come per week. Uh, you know, we are transient, we are an older club. We actually hold one of the highest percentages for teen population in the nation for all Boys and Girls Clubs. Um, so we have, we have a lot of flow coming in and out of our building. Um, and you know, through COVID, uh, it's been a very difficult year. However, we're extremely proud of everything that we've done as an organization to to ensure that and reinforce that we are, we do see ourselves as a community organization and and put ourselves at the community's needs first. Um, in the spring, uh, we work with our community partners um to help provide meals to our families and those in need. Uh, we provided deliveries and handouts over fifteen-hundred meals a week uh that were helped provided by our community parties, uh, Family Woodstock. Uh, you know, Michael just talked, was it was a uh player there and also helps us with our dinners uh daily. Um, and you know, we just made sure we targeted the people that we knew were in need and got to them and made sure that they got the resources they needed. Uh, when the summer, when summer came and uh Parks and Recs wasn't able to take off, uh, we were one of the first public uh organizations to open for for childcare, knowing that the need would be there because things were opening up and parents are going back to work. Uh, as the as the school year came, as we all know, schools weren't able to open up and uh we continue and are still in the model of being open for virtual schooling, providing kids with the resources, the wifi, the technology they need, as well as the mentors to properly uh guide through virtual learning. Um, so that's just, you know, we're proud of being always being able to step up for our our community. Uh, I just want to give overview view of what we've been doing and the work we've been putting in before we talk about this new program that uh we're really excited about. So uh our our um submission, our application is for our kitchen club. Uh, this is gonna be the start of many programs we plan to incorporate into the Boys and Girls Club with a larger focus of of um providing specific skills that are life skills, but also lead to jobs and careers that are available here in Ulster County to help, as Michael alluded to, our our kids having a buil- uh the ability to lock down jobs and careers uh and stay in our community around their families. Uh, one of the first ones that we've that we've really locked in on and we're ready to go is this kitchen club. So there's, it's this multifaceted program that'll provide a nutrition, education, um, life skills and pathways to careers uh around, all around uh cooking and all that goes on in the kitchen. One aspect of this will be our kitchen club, uh, or I apologize, our cooking club. This uh, this club will meet once a week, um, and they will provide a special meal for our members. Uh, this will be outside of the dinner that we provide, so we will lock this up for through many different uh uh ways. It it'll be either, you know, whether it's our torch club, our Keystone Club, our service groups, you know, and and each week, you know, we can rotate our groups, the kids that are active in our programs that that extend and not just being at club or the kids who have been here for twenty consecutive days, kids who are being increases in education, you know, increasing even just participation in our education programs. So I mean, there'll be many different ways in which we do these dinners. Um, and just, you know, essentially every, all of our kids will roll through this dinner. Um, it'll just be in different times and smaller uh smaller um groups and also order uh able to have the conversations around their group. Um, this group will be involved with the prep in the cooking, you know, skills that, you know, are necessary, learning how to not cross-contain, they had to properly use a knife, what safety issues, you know, how to how to work in a kitchen. Uh, but they'll also be in charge of inventory um and also budgeting. Uh, by the time um this this year's uh funding comes, we we are hoping to be in an able, in a position where we're able to move our kids through the community better. And we will have the responsibility of taking our kids to local grocery stores and, you know, with a X amount of dollars to feed X amount of kids and how are we gonna do it best and how to shop on a budget and and to show them how to be responsible with their, with how they spend their dollars. Um, we also plan to back this on the backend with trips to different kitchens to meet with different chefs and also um to provide trips to the culinary to um connect with people who for kids that may be uh interested in going to a higher level. Um, not only is this a, is this a high-level program, we have a high-level person ready to take the reins on it. Um, our cooking instructor will be uh Joe Begans from Joe B's. Um, he's been very active with our club, so we have someone who's very community-oriented um and all and very into making sure that our kids get these skills. We've run several um pop-ups that Joe has done and we still, we have the groundwork for this program and we know how it'll look moving forward. The other aspect of this is opening our store, our club store, our club cafe. So what we plan to do is provide snacks and provide different um uh food for our youth every day when they get home, when they get all in from school in that three o'clock to six o'clock, in that three o'clock to five o'clock area. Uh, this is very important for many levels. Um, you know, our kids, our parents have gotten to the habit of giving their kids, our kids a couple of dollars to run around the corner to the store. Uh, you know, grab snacks when they need them and then come back to club. We're all very aware of the dangers that are in our neighborhood um and 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 the increase in violence and things that have happened. Once those kids turn that corner on Prospect, we don't, we can't see that. Uh, they also have to walk right by the candles for DJ Thomas, who was, who was killed, uh murdered uh uh just over a year ago, um, which is some of our uh Um, which is some of our, uh, is an uncle to several of our own members. Uh, you know, one of the things we've really locked in is on the safety of our members navigating this community. If you remember, um, last year, we did our door project through CDBG. This has allowed us to control our doors and the flow in and out of club to ensure that there is not just safety from people coming into the club, but regulating kids leaving and knowing uh, during certain times where they are and not allowing them to just disappear. Um, also, we want to flip the script. You know, we want to provide healthy foods and make that available to our youth. We also know when our, when our kids go to the store with a dollar in their pocket, the only thing they can get is is two sodas. Right? We want to make water, you know, healthy products available to us. Uh, it's available to our youth at, you know, uh, through club dollars, through earning them through activities and such, and to make sure that they have that opportunity and access to a healthier lifestyle. Um, these, so these are the two aspects to the Kitchen Program. Um, and like I said, uh, this is a new level of program and focusing for the club. We we are going to move forward with, as I said before, providing specific skills that lead directly to jobs that are available in our community. We want, we are going to be collecting, connecting with the local businesses to continue to to build molds like this where we can move kids into positions where they can get jobs at 16, 17 that may lead to careers, but also can just help them and their families right now. Um, you know, hospitality is one of the biggest uh, growing, growing uh, businesses in the Hudson Valley, and there's a lot of opportunity there for youth. Uh, you know, often talk, hear people like, we need help, we need help. Uh, we're looking for employees and, uh, you know, obviously, COVID has a restriction on all that right now. But in general, pre-COVID, I, there's things I kept hearing, and I kept saying, I have talented kids. So what we're going to do is provide these programs to make sure that they have the skills to walk in, and they don't have to learn everything there, and they're ready to go and to be productive. Um, you know, with that said, um, you know, one of the biggest things about these programs is our teens are so often the most under-supported in our community. You know, even right now through COVID, the biggest concern has been childcare, parents going to work. Yet what's happening in the dynamic with our youth is that our older teens, or even our younger teens, are being asked to stay at home and watch their kids, uh, watch their little brothers and sisters while the parents go to work and navigate all this. And they're missing out on the things that 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 they're missing out on, on focusing on their progression because of all that's asked of them. Um, and, you know, these are the most vulnerable years of life. I mean, the the violence, the violent increase, the increase of violence in our neighborhood has has been directly largely in the ages of, affected the ages of 16 to 24. This is a target age group that we need to be providing resources and opportunity for, and the Boys and Girls Club is absolutely focused on being on the forefront of that, starting with this program and moving forward. Um, I I'd just like to put out that the that the club has always been, has always been, uh, has a great, long history with CDBG following through on grants, following through on the programs, paperwork. We've never had any issues down those avenues. We're always, always evolving and and uh, staying true to what we say we will provide.
Dan, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, it's Rita, Rita Worthington.
Yep, I read it.
So first of all, you know, thank you, and uh, thank you for your service. I am acutely aware of how important the Boys and Girls Club is to our young person, young people, especially in uh, this community that you serve. Um, two questions, though. Um, you said that the kids would be actually preparing the meals in the cafe, cafe kitchen program. Now, I I believe a couple of years ago, you guys updated your kitchen, so um, the first question is that will they be doing that at the club? And the second question, because you also had in your program that they were going to be taking trips to the um, Culinary Institute. And uh, secondly, just remind me again of what is the fee for the kids to um, join the club? What that fee is?
Yeah, all great questions. Um, and uh, well, first of all, yes, uh, thanks to CDBG, um, from, uh, prior to my taking this position, um, we upgraded our kitchen. All, all, everything will be prepared at the club. Um, so that'll all be done there fresh, and uh, the kids will be able to follow up on their skills on a daily basis. Um, uh, and then Rita was the second question on that. I know the last one, um, was we are still $10 a year as a facility. We are an old-school club. We are, uh, we provide our services as a, as a, you know, nominal, um, just vote of of of, um, you know, investment for the $10 uh, in the application.
Okay, and that that actually was the second question to be, so thank you for that.
Great. Uh, yeah, Patrick. Patrick.
Unmute, Pat.
Uh, yeah, you gotta unmute.
Uh, right, I am muted. I'm sorry, I'm I'm not very good at that.
You're getting quicker, though. You're getting quicker. That was quick.
Dan, what's your full name?
Daniel Whalen.
Daniel Whalen?
Yes.
All right, Daniel Whalen. Daniel Whalen, your program sounds awesome. I mean, it just hits on every point, social, emotional, financial, every well-being. I mean, who who, uh, did you come up with this program? Who came up with this program? It sounds like it's right on target.
Yeah, we, uh, you know, the whole workforce development program that we plan on leading in the future with for the club is definitely something that, you know, I put my time into. It's actually one of my focuses when I took this position. Uh, um, you know, Mr. O'Reilly, I'd like to say that I had a good English teacher in Bailey, and that might, that might have been part of, part of where where I got to today, but um, yeah, um, it's a, it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's developing, it's a passion when I took this job. I I, you know, backstory for, I mean, I know most of you have talked, I moved back home for this position, knowing that one of my biggest keys is that I feel like when kids are 19 years old, we just say, figure it out. Um, and we need to bridge that gap and lead them into careers and help to 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 do that.
So, so true, Dan. And and your program, everything I heard, the nutrition aspect, the social, emotional aspect, the financial budgeting aspect, everything you said was it 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 sounds to me like it's a true target. It it sounds like the Boys and Girls Club is going in a great direction. Um, you know, I, I can't say enough about what you just said to me. I mean, I I I love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We love our, we love what we do. We love our kids.
I know you do. Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any, any more questions for Dan? I would like to say, Dan, thanks for being here. Um, I do consider the Boys and Girls Club one of our flagship community organizations here. Um, I really like this program. Um, and there's, I I'm sensing a little theme tonight here that uh, we're preparing our young people for uh, for entering the real world. Uh, this is another one. You know, your program here at worst will prepare them with some life skills they're going to need going down the road. Um, you know, hopefully, things like this, you know, Kingston being a a huge restaurant city, um, you know, it's going to prepare them for going into, you know, some, you know, maybe high-level jobs in restaurants and, you know, not just the busboy or or something like that. So, you know, it's a good step in keeping our kids here. Um, but these are skills they can use anywhere. Um, good program. Uh, glad you were here tonight, and thanks a lot.
Thanks, Steve. And just, just to go right back on that real quick, and then I'm done. Just, yeah. You know, the big thing for me too is that, you know, I'm a product of someone who had to move away for eight years and then come back. And, you know, the, like you said, there's a lot of restaurants, and there is a lot of opportunity in there, and I think it's important, especially at a time when there's such an influx of people that are moving into our area, that our, that our youth and our families have an opportunity, at least, you know, to pursue careers and stay, you know, local. Is that you, Steve? Yeah. Go ahead, Pat.
Hey, Dan, you know, we have the Culinary Institute, which is the premier, premier, you know, uh, culinary school probably in the world, right across the river, right across the river. What a great program. I hope you connect with them. I'm sure they would love to hook up with you and your program, uh, and and make it bigger and better. Uh, we, I mean, nowhere in the world could you go to a culinary institute like the one across the, across the river. Um, uh, people come from all around the world to go there, just go to school. And 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 you're starting a program, and it just sounds like it just connects, it just makes it work. I I mean, I would love to see you guys work with the Culinary Institute across the river. Are you working with them, Dan?
We're already connected. We're just waiting to go.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
Alrighty, so our last application here is Maggie from Transart. Maggie, all you have to do is unmute yourself. Do you want to be on screen?
Not particularly.
Okay, alrighty, so if you could, uh, talk about your, your program for about five minutes, and then we'll open it up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, sort of with that, since you have the the uh, application, which has most of the details and stuff about the program, so I thought I would just give you a little sense of how we came to develop this program. Uh, Transart, uh, you, most of you know us for the building at the corner of Furnace and and Henry Street, where we've been restoring the Burger Matthews House, which we're on a momentary hiatus for COVID-related isolations. Um, but we're moving forward, and it's soon going to be, they're doing HVAC and things like that right now. And, um, the other, that, that's what we're most known for in this community, but we also produce and began on this side of the river and then moved over to Warriors Park, Jazz in the Valley. We've been producing Jazz in the Valley for 20 years. And uh, it's a music festival. And one of the things that we found consistently is when we were looking for young people to work the festival, to do various jobs around, we couldn't find them because young people in this area don't have that skill, don't have those skills. Most of you, we've had a lot of conversation around providing opportunities for young adults and jobs related to the arts. Well, arts is what we do. And so this is an internship program for various arts-related jobs. About three years ago, we began conversations with the City of Kingston for the production of a Pinkster Festival. Pinkster is the first African-American festival in the Americas. It began in the 1600s and um, was a festival that brought artisans and peo- people of color together. Um, it was the one time each year that they could do all of their business, see family, do whatever. And we want to manifest, and ultimately, it became a, an all-community event. It's the one time a year that actually people of the races mixed and in celebration together. And um, we want to create a 21st century reinvention of Pinkster. So, that, about three years ago began, we began a partnership with the City of Kingston, worked with the Mayor's Office and and Addy to develop, to develop um, applications in a, a program which we received funding from the, from the National Endowment for the Arts for, to begin planning two years ago. And we're in, we're now in, in the planning, we're sort of midway through the planning phase. And so we're now beginning to actually develop the production of Pinkster. And um, we have, we got a $75,000 grant from the NEA to develop the planning. And it's a twofold program. It's a program that that engages um, people in the community through create, through design thinking. This is all through design thinking sessions, which are sort of charrettes, where you bring people together and talk, and it's all going to be, and all of that is based and built around what is the history of this area? And what are the, how do we find and uncover and reveal historical places and the art artists living in our midst? Some who don't even realize that they are artists and what's possible. So, there, so one phase is the whole design thinking sessions, which is, are being conducted by a cultural anthropologist led by Dr. Curtis Mar- Marungie, who is originally from Nigeria. He's spent a lot of time in this area. He would, he served as one of our interns before he went to Harvard. And um, he's go- going to run the design thinking, which is, which brings people together to really talk and bring out the stories of people, so that people begin to tell their stories. The stories of their people that they're descended from and reveal that. Those stories will also be, one of our partners is uh, Radio Kingston, and they will be uh, broadcasting those stories into the community. And all of that is to then, all of that leads up to the production of Pinkster. And the so Pinkster will be and will be a actual event, some, some of which are reenactments, but more than, more than reenactments, uh, celebrations of the, the ways that the African-Americans in this community have built this community for 300 years. And connecting people of color to that history, to build and restore a sense of pride. You know, one of the things that we're all looking at, at uh, the inequalities that, that COVID has sort of put right in people's faces. One of the impacts of that is that young people of color don't have a sense of pride about who they are descended from and how we came to be here and what we've done. I mean, we built this sucker, you know? And um, it's important to give people a sense of that so that they then uh, can move forward in their lives with excitement and personal uh, just a sense of who they are and loving that. And one of the ways to do that is to be able to have, as I think you've said, Patrick, a good job. So jobs in the arts are good-paying jobs, to be stagehands, to be um, man, various managers of, we have a lot of arts organizations around here, and very rarely do you see a young person of color in any kind of job of responsibility. The, this is to open up possibilities for jobs of responsibility. And the, you know, some of them will, will be looking at stagehands and, you know, and security. But but others will have the opportunity to, to be even broader and see all aspects of how you manage the various arts programs. How do you put on an event and what does that take? How do you, um, let's see, what else? Oh, lighting technicians, sound technicians, all of that. So this is an internship to engage young adults, 18 to early twenties, in those, those jobs with experience. And so we are working with Ballantyne Communications, you know, they have radio stations in this area. They are also a major production company. They travel all over the world, providing uh, backline to, to organize. They actually do the backline for Jazz in the Valley. So interns will have the opportunity to work with them. They will work with our, with Dr. Mar- Marungie. They'll get a chance to, uh, yeah, so, and and essentially get the, the opportunity to see jobs in action, get on-the-job training, and work with professionals who are already working in the job, in these fields and have been for years. We're talking about uh, five interns for the, for the period of time for a year, and and with, uh, and at least two of those will be Kingston, will be young Kingstonians from, you know, our, from the marginalized neighborhoods, black and Hispanic youth. from, you know, or un- from the marginalized neighborhoods, black and Hispanic youth. And um largely. See, I think that's.
Maggie, may I ask a question, please?
Absolutely.
This is Rita Worthington.
Yes, I know Rita.
Hi, so um, so the pro- I like this program. It sounds much like the um, the African-American burial grounds where they hire youth and/or volunteer um of young people to come and design the um, you know, the proposal. And that's what this sounds as, sounds like too, where you would gather up youth to kind of, with a design thinking proposal. So my question is, have you already identified those young people? Or are you going to put out an application process? How is that going to work to um gather the young people to help with this program?
We're gonna pu- um, first, it's um, it's not it, it, it is similar to the um what was done at the African burial ground, but this is actually more targeted to real, we're giving kids jobs, you know, we're going to pay, I mean, it's a stipend, but, and it's, you know, it's not a full-time job, but it's, it's 20 hours a week at $15 an hour. And we're expecting them to, we're expecting them to work. Th- this is sort of on-the-job training with um with people who are professionals in, in the field. And for the most part, they're also working with people who look like them. Uh, who are professionals earning the, earning jobs. So we do not have people identified at this moment. We are um, going to be putting out applications. We're going to go to the Y, we're going to go to Boys and Girls Club, we're going to be talking to Laura at, at uh, you know, and, and find youth who are interested in, in, in working in jobs in the arts. Maybe they've thought about it and they don't think it's possible to, to fi- find work that actually, that they can live on. Um, they can't live on the stipend, we're paying them, but once they've, but when they fini- when we finish with them, they'll be able to get uh, get good-paying jobs at any uh, at many arts-related businesses. So we'll be looking, I mean, those who work with me, for instance, will learn about grant writing. Um, I'm actu- I was actually, prior to coming here, I was a workforce development director across the river. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Patrick?
Love the idea of internships. So important to be mentored by someone uh who has similar interests as you. And they can give you those little tips and those little helpful hints and they can push you along. Um, you know, I just, uh, I remember speaking at the la- I think it was the last council meeting about a friend of mine who, who had an internship from the high school, Kingston High School. And he worked at IBM and he, now he's, it's 30 years later and he's got a good job and he's, you know, and he's, and he's doing well. And, 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 and if you knew this guy in high school, you would say, oh my God, he's never going to make it. But this, but the internship saved his life. So uh, so important that the inter- and I love, the other thing I love is that you're connecting the community. Now, probably the reason I'm an alderman today is because of the connection to the community that I have. My family's been here, that I can even tell you, about 150 years. But that's not touching some of the people that have been here in, in, in 300, you said 300 years there, they've been here, right? That's twice the amount of time that my family has been in Kingston. And I have a connection to Kingston, and the reason I'm an alderman is probably because of that connection. And these are the things that motivate you to do things and to help your community and get involved. So if you can make those connections to the community with, with young people, it's so important, so important. And, and then they make a connection, they get a foothold, they get a foothold, and that's where they can step up and they can, and they can, and they can move. And they can, they can feel like there's, there's some, some connection. And, and the internship sounds like a wonderful way to propel them uh to the next step. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What other questions? No other questions?
I think there's a question from an advisory board member. I'm just gonna.
Hi, yes, um, this is Corinne White. Um, I just had a quick question in regards to the internship. The program sounds fantastic. Um, first off, um, I myself am a professional theater and visual artist. And so I know that these internships can be really great opportunities. The one question that I have in regards to the stipend and, and working with these professionals is the hours, because obviously you don't expect the stipend to support, you know, these, these young people. Um, it's also limited to 20 hours a week, but will the, will their schedules be regular? I guess, is, is that something that you will try to aim to create so they can support themselves?
No. The simple answer is no in terms of uh them supporting themselves through the internship. The internship is a way for them to learn so that when they finish the internship, they're equipped to take a full-time job or not necessarily, but that immediately. But to give them the skill set and open possibilities so that they know how to do and what to do on, on a job.
Yes, I, maybe I should rephrase my question. So one of the challenges for a lot of young people entering the arts is being able to support themselves taking other work while working as an intern. And so my concern is if a young intern that's in the 18 to early twenties is interning with you and they have 20 hours a week, if those hours will be regular enough, meaning like a regular schedule, that taking other work so they can support themselves is actually feasible. Because for many young artists, it's very, very difficult if their schedule's very erratic. So that's, that's my question.
Okay, so from that perspective, we are, that's absolutely what we're doing. Is where, we are, we will, whoever is selected will have flexibility. This is not a, not necessarily a nine-to-five job. This is a job that, you know, jo- the, all the various jobs in the arts that are related to production particularly, excuse me, have many different hours. Some of them are in the mid, in the morning, some run into late at night. So people will be um, they'll be on, on, on the job at all of those various different times. And we've calculated this out so that it's like, um, like it's a full year for two. But it's actually, at various points, we'll have six people and at other points, we'll have two people. And depending on what point of production we're in. And th- they will get, um, so they will be able to earn, get their 20 hours in a flexible way that we will tailor to them. I mean, we're not, we're only, we're talking about a couple of people and we will, we will work with them so that they, they get to learn how crazy it is to work in various aspects of the arts. And um, and at the same time, work with, with very high-level professionals to do what they do.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that, that sometimes internships with arts organizations, um, the, there isn't as much sensitivity to the fact that young people need to be able to support themselves beyond the stipend that the internship would provide. So I just wanted to, to check in on that. Thank you.
We are very conscious about, about what it takes, particularly for young people of color to be able to get an internship and get real, you know, and get real work that will fill, that, that they can live on.
Mm-hmm, great, thank you.
What other questions? Well, I thank you then for consideration, for consi- for considering this. We would really want to open up new possibilities for young people in Kingston and have them see that who they are is enough to have a be- bright, a real bright and wonderful future, and particularly in various aspects of the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, that's the end of the speakers for this portion, so I'll let you move on to agenda item.
Um, yeah, if we could back up just a moment, um, I would like to give Amy the floor for a second. We had technical, technical difficulties with a caller earlier who has sent her comments in writing. Amy has that. If Amy would be so kind as to read that. Unmute Amy.
Pulling a Patrick here. So this is from Ellen DeFalco. Um, it's the CDBG public hearing, reallocation of $554,500 in entitlement funds. I'm opposed to the funding of $50,000 for the asbestos removal and demolition at 500 Broadway, the former Planet Wings location. The project, when proposed by the mayor in early 2019, was done with a $475,000 budget transfer from the city's fund balance to cover necessary expenses for property acquisition and demolition of structure and removal of debris. To authorize CDBG funds to cover the shortfalls is unacceptable. When resolutions were passed on April 2nd, 2019 to purchase this property, questions should have been asked at that time if more spending was necessary. The project, construction and other costs succeed the New York State Department of Transportation's $750,000 secured by our assemblymen and taxp- and taxpayers are left to make up the difference. This $50,000 should be reallocated to our citywide sewer infrastructure improvements, which are sorely needed. I am also opposed to the allocation of $4,500 for special economic development activity for micro enterprise assistance on behalf of the Business Alliance of Kingston. This organization is approved again when $25,000 has already been allocated to them for the same program. Their request was approved from the second round of the CDBG COVID crisis recovery funds. Why is BAK, Business Alliance of Kingston, entitled? There are programs being administered by the county that provide assistance to small businesses. All they have to do is apply for it. The county announced December 10th, 2020 that the Ulster County Economic Development Alliance was second, stepping up to assist small businesses as part of their resilience economic plan, which is an expansion through partnership with the Mid-Hudson New York Small Business Development Center and Ulster County Response Team. Keep in mind, the BAK replied, applied for a $100,000 CDBG grant in 2009 for dreamed-up Main Street manager project, which failed miserably. It is disingenuous for BAK to continue to apply for funding to subsidize programs already in existence, which I mentioned previously. It is also irresponsible for this board to approve funding for Business Alliance of Kingston, which is administered by the same individual who potentially has a conflict of interest because of their seat held currently or in recent past on the KLDC board. In closing, the $554,500 should be reallocated to the citywide sewer infrastructure improvements. Thank you, Ellen DeFalco.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, all right, we're going to back up. We are going to start at the top of our agenda. Um, there's really not a whole on, not a whole lot on the agenda. Uh, number one, are the approval of the minutes. Um, I trust everybody has had a chance to look at the, the minutes from last meeting. Uh, um, are there any? Okay, would someone like to make a motion that we accept the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Coop. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and our, actually our one item of business. Um, I'm going to turn the floor over to Amy. Um, we are going to be looking at some reallocations of some funds once again. Um, so I'm going to let Amy explain that to you and uh.
Are we ready? So um, I'm just going to, you know, segue into Julie, who will present the application. But I did want to just recap how this money came about. Back in the spring for the 2020 annual entitlement round of funding, this committee and council had approved $55,000 to the YMCA for the Y Park. And Arlene and Heidi Kirchner worked tirelessly to try to get the necessary backup documentation to get the environmentals approved. And in the end, it was just too difficult. Um, there was, there was missing documents about soil, et cetera, et cetera, and it just wasn't going to happen. So she seeded her um award, their award. And I was on the phone with the mayor just to apprise him, and then he had informed me that the other project that this committee and council had approved was the Midtown Rising renovation of the basketball courts at Clinton Avenue United Methodist Church. And I just, I finally got in touch with the pastor to confirm that. And it was true that the lease was terminated on December 31st, so that will not be happening. So that freed up the other $32,400. So um, the mayor and I and, you know, Julie was brought in to oversee the application to reallocate that $87,400. So I will let Julie explain and describe the application.
Thanks, Amy. And thanks, everyone, for your time. Uh, so the application would be for the 2020 as a substantial amendment uh for the 2020 CDBG funding for the $87,400, the full amount. And it would be for parking recreation, parking improvements, phase one. Uh, we would anticipate that in the future, we would apply for additional phases of parking, as many of our parks do need park improvements. Uh, this particular phase would focus primarily on Block Park. So Block Park has a um, not well-improved parking area, uh, multiple parking areas that are not striped well, if at all. Uh, the, the access to in the area around the pavilion is um pocked up with, with holes and issues. Uh, and in addition to the poor conditions of the parking areas in the park, it's actually unsafe in terms of ingress and egress, as there are many ways in and out of the park and it's not intuitive to folks how to get in and out. That is unsafe on a Beale Street. And so with this funding, we propose uh, working with an asphalt vendor. Uh, there is at least one on state bid. We have worked, we have met onsite with Kalanam uh to look at and receive an estimate for what it would look like to improve this area. And so um, they did come back with an estimate um that is consistent with this amount of money, the 80- that is consistent with this amount of money, the 87.4. And the scope of it would be to fully add a new subbase and blacktop, which would add about six to eight inches of elevation on the entire east and west parking areas. So from the basketball court to the bathrooms, and then from the bathrooms to the, near the wall ball court, and consolidate in and out exit and entrance there. Install a guide rail along Abil Street to protect the parking area and also to pave at the pavilion. In order to do so, we would likely need to go through environmental review as Block Park is in a floodplain. This portion of this project would be elevating the parking lot out of the existing floodplain. But we would still proceed through the environmental review if that was necessary. And should this be approved, we would progress through the timeline as swiftly as possible so that we can have this on the agenda of the asphalt company as soon as the asphalt plant opens. And so that we can execute the construction to have it complete by the end of April to have full submissions for reimbursement by the end of May.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Julie. I would like to give some personal comments here. I have not any longer, but I played softball at Block Park for thirty-some years down there, and I watched that parking lot deteriorate. It seems like in the seventies, it wasn't bad, but now it's, as Julie says, it's I mean, it is so far below the street level now. It really poses a danger getting in and out of there. The surface is really poor. It floods all the time. I cannot remember in my days with the rec commission or playing ball any major improvements down there, you know, maybe once in a while, some large holes were filled, but I really can't think of much. I mean, I really think this is a good use.
I think you muted, Steve.
Did you want to talk, Doug?
Well, I do have a question, but I think you muted before you finished, didn't you? All of a sudden, you cut out there.
I'm not sure where I left off. If I did, my apologies. I don't think, I don't think my ending was of much more relevant.
Okay, so you said enough, okay. The question I have, how elevating a parking lot sounds like a big deal. I mean, how much are you elevating it? Two inches, a foot, three feet?
It's not a substantial elevation. We would not excavate the existing surface, so it would essentially be the addition of a subbase, which would be stone, and then the pouring of the blacktop. So it would literally be just the actual material that would be needed in order to pave it. And by not removing the existing blacktop, not only do we save money, but we also then inherently will, it will elevate on its own with the materials, about six to eight inches.
So six to eight inches takes it out of the floodplain is what you're saying.
That's my understanding. And it also, right now, it would make it more even with the road. And if you are familiar with the area, if you're over by the third baseline side by the basketball court, that area is actually higher in elevation and is not in the floodplain. So we would make it level with the part of the parking lot that is closer to the third baseline. So if you drive by there, basically the elevation that is there, which is not in the floodplain, would be the complete elevation surrounding the rest of the parking lot.
Could you say again, maybe I missed it. What was the total cost for the whole parking lot project? Paving the entrances and egresses and increasing the base and bringing it above the flood, the whole wall of wax, how much?
I didn't say what the cost was. I'm asking for 87.4, but our quote came in higher than that.
I'm sorry, you think it may be higher?
It is higher. So we will be working with the asphalt company to provide services in-house, such as transportation of fill and use of our trucks and possibly other negotiation in order to bring the cost down to be within the budget that we need.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick. Go ahead, Patrick.
Can someone educate you a little bit about this? You know, I understand the different programs. This is not a program. This is a this is a capital project. I don't, is the CBG money? I mean, I'm new to this committee, so is the CG money, CBG money available for this kind of thing?
Yes, because we're reallocating Y Park and basketball courts, which were a project, to another project. You can do program to project, but you can't do projects to program because we are capped out at 15% of our annual CDBG funds for programs. So that if we wanted to reallocate and add to a program, chances are we wouldn't be able to. But this is for projects to project.
So this is considered a project, which is 15% of our money, and $85,000 or $87,000, 15% of $550,000, so this is allowed?
No, no, no. This is our annual entitlement of 700 some thousand dollars that was awarded in May. So our 15% was already allotted, the 20% for admin was allotted, the 250,000 for housing was allotted. And the remainder went to the Y Park. Goodness, I don't even know the Y Park, Midtown Rising and other projects. But since those two projects, the Y Park and Midtown Rising cannot occur, that money is being transferred back to the city for a city project.
Since they're projects, we can do projects.
Right.
But other funds are specifically for other kinds of things like housing and things like that.
Well, housing is up to the committee, and it's already been voted on for the 2020. You'll be voting on that next month. How much to give to the housing, how much to give to programs that you just heard the eight this past, you know, tonight, all you heard were the eight programs for the, you know, applicants. And that is capped out at 15% of our annual entitlement.
And that's why, and that's why Amy, we can give some of this money to, we have some of this money that is allocated towards the Jack in the Box on Broadway, and we got the.
That's a different, that's at the 554,000. The 550,000 of that money, the 500 for the sewers, the 50,004 Planet Wings is for previous years of unspent funds. And the 4,500 was a transfer from Kingston High School. They had an internship, but they could not implement that because of COVID. And so that got, that program went to another program for, my gosh, all of a sudden, made in Kingston, sorry.
And Amy, what happens if we don't allocate all this $87,000, or what happens to the money?
Well.
You're losing?
I'll let Mandy take that one. We have to, we need to spend our money. That's another conversation, but.
That's another conversation. Thank you very much. I just wanted to hear that.
Question for Julie.
Good.
Okay. What is the difference, or is there a difference between a floodplain and a flood zone? Is there a difference and does that matter?
So the, if you look at the FEMA flood maps, the area that is encapsulating Block Park and all of Kingston Point and other areas along our waterfront are designated in different zones. And that the Zone AE is the zone that that is in, which is an area that is of concern for flooding. That is a designated zone. We would be moving out into the Zone X. Those are designated zones by FEMA. And there are restrictions through CDBG on what can and cannot be built in certain flood zones. Floodplain is a more broad term that isn't designated to that degree by FEMA. It is in a larger area that's more habitat terms, you know, where the water can go when it floods and generally the low-lying areas around. But the actual term floodzone is a designated FEMA area on maps that impact insurance rates, impact development, impact CDBG. So this particular project and other projects that we would do, you know, within other flood zones go through greater scrutiny through CDBG.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't know. Jeffrey, I saw your hand go up too, so surely I would defer to you. Okay, so I have a question for Julie. So the monies that you're asking for this project, that's roughly the entire amount, right, of the allocated funds that we have?
Yes.
Right? Okay, so, you know, just your opinion, you know, during COVID, you know, with all of the emergencies that's going on with the housing crisis, the rent payments and everything else, mental health issues, everything that's going on right now. I mean, in your estimation, do you feel like this is an important project that we should be taking on rather than reallocating those funds to some of the dire emergencies that's going on right now?
We can't, we are at our maximum for programs. We cannot exceed 15%. We're at our maximum for programs.
So we can't give any more money to any of those programs?
Correct.
I see. Okay, well, that answers, Julie, you don't have to answer that. I answered my question.
I need to speak for you.
And also, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong here. We have a certain amount of time to spend these, so we can't be starting projects. A project like this has already been out to bid, so, you know, a lot of the legwork has been done, so.
Right.
You know, that's kind of what.
Right. Yeah, so Julie had pointed out that because this is, we go through Calanam and they're on the state bid, it doesn't have to go on bid, so we'll just get on their schedule. As soon as the plant opens and you're selling asphalt again, this can be done.
Okay, just to refresh everybody's memory, we do have a, we have a timetable that we have to go by in order to spend some money. So certainly, as Rita said, there's tons of projects around this city, but we don't have time to initiate them, you know, from scratch, you know, get them out to bids. We're really looking for projects that have been started, more or less, at least with a bidding process, things like that, you know, so this falls within that. And it is a worthwhile thing. You know, Block Park is a big source of revenue for our city with softball and whatever else goes on down there. And there are a lot of complaints from the ballplayers that, you know, it's not kept up and, you know, why are they paying money, you know, and this parking lot is like this and, you know, on and on. So, you know, I do feel it's a good use of the money. You know, these people are, you know, members of our community. They're down there paying us to play ball. You know, it's nice to.
Go ahead. Julie, can you speak to, how you doing, Julie? Can you speak to the use of Block Park as compared to other parks? I mean, is it, is it, as Steve said, how well is it used? And that's all I, that's my question, I guess.
Sure. So each of our parks has different amenities, which dictate then the use. I cannot compare it to Kingston Point or Forsyth, which are two most highly used parks and Dade Stadium. Those have incredibly high attendance, but I will say that they have far more amenities. Block Park, the main draw is the softball field. We use it for multiple purposes. And I would say after Forsyth and Kingston Point, it would be on par with how much Hasbrook is used. And so it would be probably in the third or fourth rank for use. Now, that being said, it is used for active and passive parkland, like any park would be. We host active softball leagues on that field, of course, non-COVID times. Multiple nights a week, multiple hours of the night. We have night games there where lights are on. We have flag football that we play on that same field in a different season. There are basketball pickup games constantly on the basketball courts, and people regularly rent the pavilion, and actually it was recently just dedicated. There's a playground there that's actively used by the community. And I don't know if a lot of people use the wall ball court. I haven't actually seen a lot of people using it. I don't know if they do or not. However, it is one of only three locations, two really primary, that we host our softball league. So it is critical for that, and on the softball nights, with the turnover of the league and the games back to back, there is a demand for the parking. And with that change in the shifts from game to game, there is a lot of movement in and out of the park with vehicles. And so the streamlining and the management of the safety for in and out will be much better, particularly at times when softball is changing shifts.
Thank you. Will there be any improvement in the pavilion?
Not the pavilion itself, the parking area and the access to the pavilion. We don't own the road from, we don't own the actual access road from Abil Street down to the pavilion. That is owned by Rabbi Anucci, who owns Island Dock. And that's the access road to Island Dock, but we will be paving from, we'll be improving and paving the parking lot at the pavilion and from the pavilion to that road that Rabbi owns.
Do you own, do we own the pavilion?
Yes.
But not the access to it?
We own the access from his, so if you know where that big tall industrial building is kind of on the turn, there's a small access road there in between that brings you to Island Dock. That road is owned by Mr. Anucci. You have to take that road to get to our pavilion. When you get to the bottom of it, about 100 feet in, you take a left off of that road into a short entrance into our pavilion area. So we own to the edge of the park, which goes up to his road.
Will we be paving any of Mr. Anucci's property?
We will not.
Okay. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Jeffrey, go ahead.
Hi, Julie. I just have a quick question. You said that this would likely cost more than the amount that we have to reallocate. Have you identified where the additional funding will come from? Is that going to be grant funded or?
No, as I mentioned before, it did come slightly in over the costs that we have available. And so we are in discussion with Calanam such that portions of the project that are able to be done in-house by DPW would be done by us instead, which would include transportation of stone and use of our vehicles, our trucks for transportation of materials. And so in doing so, that could reduce and likely will reduce the cost of the project. We will not go higher than the amount that we have available.
Thank you.
And if that negotiation does not happen, we will we will change the scope of the project to make it smaller, to stay within the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Patrick, go ahead.
Julie, just while I got you here, I'm just asking. Soccer is such a wonderful sport. Soccer is such a wonderful sport and it's been coming up lately much faster than softball or baseball. And I know we're paving the thing. Is there any soccer fields being built? Or is there any concept or is there any ideas, there's any designs for soccer fields that are being built? I know it's a huge, you know, it's becoming the sport and, you know, we want to keep our kids interested. And I know baseball's on the decline. I hate to say it, it's terrible, but it is the truth. Is there any, is there any plans for a soccer field anywhere soon?
There is, and by September, there will be a soccer field at Kingston Point. So the short version of this answer is that we have funding through the Office of Parks Russian. We're doing a two-phase project at Kingston Point, which is moving half of the parking lot that is always inundated with water north of Delaware Avenue where the playground used to sit, will be elevating that land about a foot higher to put in a new 50-plus parking area. And then next to that, north of that, between the pavilion and that space, we're going to be putting in a new U-12 soccer field. Not new, well, our first soccer field on city property and actually the first open soccer field within the city limits. So, and should funding move through for CDBG, we'll also be putting through a brand-new playground at Kingston Point. So the bids will be going out in March. The construction will start in May and we will have a new parking lot and soccer field by September.
Wow, that sounds great, Julie. And, you know, the Kingston Point is, that's wonderful, not very accessible, but wonderful. And, you know, maybe we can think about putting some soccer fields a little more accessible to the neighborhoods that our children are growing up in, but, you know, Kingston Point, you know, is definitely a a place to go, you know, and so that's excellent. I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you so much. So, does anyone have any? Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Julie? So where are we on this? Are we to vote on this? Is there a specific committee report? What are we doing here? What are we doing tonight? Is there a committee report? I would like to vote on this tonight. I haven't seen committee report.
So can, are we, are you able to vote on it tonight? And then I would.
We could vote on this tonight. It would have to go into the papers tomorrow. We have to schedule a public hearing. It wouldn't go to the full council until March, just to get the public hearing in before the full council votes.
The answer is we cannot vote on it tonight.
The committee can vote on it tonight. The council won't vote on it until after the public hearing. So you can vote.
So you have the hearing between the committee vote and the council vote?
Yes, instead of after the council vote, which makes no sense.
Well, for COVID funds, you only needed five days, so we were able to quickly get that in the paper, but for regular round, we need 30 days. So I will put it in the paper tomorrow to go in on Thursday. And then 30 days brings it out to sometime end of February.
Is there a document? Is there a committee report? I mean, we don't know specifically. I don't think what we're voting on. Maybe the rest of you do, but I don't.
The committee report would be to reallocate the $55,000 from the YMCA Y Park and the $32,400 from the Midtown Rising Basketball Indoor Basketball Court renovation at CAUMC to Phase One, however Julie wrote it, paving park improvements, whatever.
All right. So we're just voting on the park?
Right, the reallocation of that $87,400.
Of which there are two pieces.
Correct, so two projects will now get funneled into one.
So Amy, can you just say one more time the reason why Midtown Rising could not use the funds?
All I know, and I have the document and I can certainly share it with you, is that the lease terminated with, between Midtown Rising and the church on 30th.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't even want to know what happened or why.
Okay, neither do I. I just wanted to know why we got that money back, that's all.
And Amy, for the third time for my benefit, specifically give me those two pieces again, that total up to 87,400.
$55,000 from the YMCA Y Park. $32,400 from Midtown Rising Indoor Basketball Court renovation at CAUMC Clinton Avenue United Methodist Church.
As we usually do in instances like this where we don't have a committee report, if everybody understands the motion that's being made, and Amy's done it a couple of times, we can take the vote and then the committee report will be forwarded to everybody for their share.
Yeah, ultimately, there has to be a report that we sign, yea or nay.
Do you want me to hurriedly type one up now or after the meeting and then?
I don't think we need it now.
If you send it to me tomorrow, I will then get it out for signature.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, I've.
Voted it upon until we actually sign it, right?
Yes, we have to sign it.
So if we vote tonight, it's really an issue of intent, really, right?
Well, pretty much, yeah.
If we voted it down, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't go to the trouble of preparing a committee report. But if we agree, if we vote in a positive tonight, that says, okay, get a committee report and send it to me and I'll sign it.
Yeah, that's pretty much in a nutshell.
So do you want me to do this now? What do you want me to do? I don't understand.
Well, I think we need the motion first, doesn't we?
Yeah. Would somebody, would somebody like to make a?
I'll make a motion that we reallocate the $87,000 for the Block Park pavement project. I'm for it, since we know that they are not going to, you know, if the project cannot be funded with the proceeds that we reallocate, they're not going to go above that matter, so I'm fine. And since we cannot reallocate it to any of the other programs, you know, for the COVID crisis, then, you know, I think it's good use of the money and we have to spend it down, so why not, you know, do some cosmetics to the park down there. So I'll make that motion. All that to say, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Rita's made a motion, Patrick has seconded. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Who seconded? Patrick?
Patrick.
All right, I'm writing up the committee report.
All set, Amy?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay, all right. Yes. Okay, and with that, I believe we are at the end of our agenda for tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, Steve, question, question. Sorry, sorry, guys. So.
That's all right.
All right, so the reallocation of the $500,000 for the sewer project, that's not a topic of discussion for tonight? No? We had the public hearing for it. Is that all it was supposed to be, just that?
We've already had the public comment and it's been in the paper for 30 days.
Okay, so prior to ending the discussion, can I just go on record with saying something, Steve, if you would allow me, please? I just wanted to just express my disappointment and that when we allocated those funds, that $500,000 for the sewer project, you know, the impression was that it would also include construction and repair of the sewer work in Midtown Kingston. As a matter of fact, when deciding to approve the funding, it was because it was said in that meeting that repair and construction would, you know, that we would do repair and construction for the sewers in Midtown. And now I'm finding out that that $500,000 that we that we allocated is only for study and design. That was not my impression. Had I known that, I would have never voted a yes on that. And so I am very disappointed about how those funds are being used. I know what was said in that meeting and the fact that it is not going for a construction and only for design work, you know, I don't, I am besides myself with that. And unfortunately, it appears that there's nothing that we can do about it. And so I just want to go on record and state my disappointment. And I feel like we were bamboozled, to say the least. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you for saying that. Well, there is something we could do. We could vote it down. We could vote it down, Rita. I mean, I wouldn't say there's nothing we can, there's nothing that can be done about it, no.
Well, we've already, we've already voted, we've already voted a yes for it and a committee report has already been signed and sent in.
I'm not taking a position by that comment. I'm just saying it ain't a done deal till it's done deal. No, I don't think you could say there's nothing that can be done about it. I think, you know, we can question, we can hear testimony, so to speak, but ultimately, we can, I mean, I wouldn't be as pessimistic as you are. I think you could still vote it down. And again, I'm not taking a position by that comment. You know.
The council already voted on it.
Well, if anybody voted on it, then what? We voted on it and now we're voting to reallocate. I don't understand.
No, it was, we neglected to have a public hearing about it, so we had a public hearing tonight on those funds. But after the fact, this is my understanding, and this is only my impression. I don't know how everyone else felt about it, but after we signed that committee report and the council voted on it, then the RFP came out saying that it was for study and design. That's not what my understanding was of those CDBG funds that we allocated, that $500,000. And so, you know, and this is why I'm expressing my disappointment.
It wasn't my understanding either. Steve, you got anything to say about that?
You're on mute, Steve.
Okay, yeah, I agree with Rita. I mean, my impression was this money was going to go towards, it didn't mention design work, so I agree with that part of it. The only thing I will say is that, you know, like any other project, there has to be some design work done, so that money will have to come from somewhere, you know, somewhere else, I guess. So we would have to discuss that, you know, probably at finance, that would have to be brought up, where that money is going to come from for the design work if it's not used from the funds that we reallocated. I don't know if you're following me with that.
I do, I do follow you and I understand that. However, that's not, you know, we didn't say that the total $500,000 was going to only be for design work and study. It was our impression, and if I'm speaking for you all, let me know, that that money was going to be used for maybe design work, but also construction as well. So the fact that it's all of that money, $500,000, is only going to be used for study and design work, that's not what we voted for. And again, if I'm speaking on behalf of you all, you all correct me.
I agree. I agree with you, Rita. I did not believe that that was all design work either. It did, it did appear to be, when it was presented to us, that there was going to be actually, you know, shovels in the ground. What happened to that? What happened to that? Where'd it go?
Can I speak for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Mandy.
So any money that's not spent on design will be used on construction, but we have to spend these monies. If we don't, HUD will take them back.
Mandy, I understand that. I certainly understand that. However, I know what I was told. I was told that when I questioned it, I was told that the $500,000 would be used for design work and study. And any other monies that would go for construction would have to be found elsewhere. That's what I was told. And that's not what, when I, when we initially had that meeting and allocating these funds, that was not what was proposed.
Amy, can you find the committee report?
I can give, I have the committee report.
Okay. Yeah, they would be minutes, right?
The committee report says for engineer studies, design work and sewer repair for streets in Midtown, including Prospect Street. The RFP used language in it that said construction. Now, I mean, again, the fact that it has already gone through the council, it appears we can't do anything about it, but I'm just saying.
Accepted. Am I on mute? Say $500K for design and sewer repair for Midtown.
Yeah, and so when you hear sewer repair, what do you think?
As Patrick said, yeah.
Misleading information is what happened to us.
That's my comment, Steve, so if you want to go ahead and adjourn, feel free. There's not, I don't think we can do anything about it. But please know my disappointment.
Okay, I think we all, we all hear that. Actually, I think everybody is in agreement that we all understood that. I don't know, perhaps, maybe I'll call call John tomorrow, the engineer, to find out. I mean, it just seems that that's an awful lot of money for the design. If originally we were talking about design work and construction, to have that all taken up by design just seems, you know, a little, a little high to me. Maybe he can shed some light on why that was done. So I'll give him a call tomorrow. I'll let everybody know what I find out.
Good idea, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. All right. Okay, motion to adjourn by Doug. Second by Patrick. All in favor? Second by Patrick, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, I'll be in touch with everybody.